This is the Sherburne Advisory Committee meeting for Wednesday, February 12th. It's just past 5:30. We are meeting with a school business administrator, superintendent, and chair of the Sherburne School Committee to talk about, in this segment of the meeting, the Pine Hill School budget. That's going to be followed at 6:30 by a discussion about the Turf Field Track project, which will be followed at 7:00 with a discussion of the regional schools budget. So with that said, could I get a motion to approve the agenda as read?
So moved.
Thanks. And quick roll call. Let's start in person. Doug.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Stephen.
Aye.
Nora.
Aye.
Shelley, if you're there. Okay, I as well. So we're 6:00 approving the agenda. Did folks get a chance to look over minutes?
Yes.
Everybody comfortable approving those? The one change was-
From last Wednesday.
From last Wednesday, from the February 5th meeting. Paul had suggested adding a decimal place to the percent change in the version 1.0 school budget, just so it matched Dawn's number, so it'd be 2.31. Welcome to motion with respect to the minutes.
So moved.
Second. All right, let's do this the other way. Stephen.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Doug.
Aye.
Nora.
Aye.
Shelley, are you there?
I am, I'm sorry, I had some trouble with my microphone. Aye.
Okay, and I as well, 7:00 on approving minutes. Okay, that's great. That takes care of our bit of extra business. I think what we're going to do, I've got some intro remarks, but I think I'm actually just going to save those until we get to the region, and I think maybe Beth and Dawn can share that with you, rather than doing it here and then doing it again there. So I would suggest that we just turn it over to you, take us through everything there is to know about the budget. We had a chance to meet with Dawn, some of us, the school EAs, once we met with Dawn recently, which was really helpful. Dawn's been a great partner in all of this, but would love to hear situation for Pine Hill, and we'll get going with discussion and questions. And we should probably all introduce ourselves, because I'm not sure everybody knows everybody.
Great.
So, I'm Dan Sickel, Chair of Sherburne Advisory.
Doug Kingsley, new member this year of Sherburne Advisory.
Paul Pula.
Mike Winters, Vice Chair.
Stephen Bondur, first year on advisory as well.
And Nora?
Nora Lynch, third year on advisory from Sherburne.
Shelley? Ducked out. Okay, she's got some things going on. I think she's going to be here in person later. Back to you.
Thank you all, first and foremost, so very much for coming here tonight, and for all of the volunteer hours that you put into ensuring that our town is using its funds and its tax dollars in a fiscally responsible manner. As Chair of the Sherburne School Committee, I just want to let you know how important this is to us, and the time that we spend reviewing the budget, Dawn is an incredible navigator. She helps us learn new terms, she helps us break it down, and she does so in a wonderful manner. It is very clear to me how much she cares about this town and this district, and that education is of the utmost importance, ensuring that every dollar is well spent. On the Sherburne School Committee, we are dedicated to making certain that every student that goes into the Pine Hill halls is not only receiving an academically rigorous education, a emotionally well-balanced experience, but they are thriving. We want to give them innovations, tools, foundations, that will really set them on a wonderful path for future education in Dover Middle, Dover Sherburne Middle School, Dover Sherburne High School, wherever their educational path leads them. And so much of that falls on the shoulders of the wonderful members of this community. People who have children in Pine Hill, people who have children who have graduated from Pine Hill, people who do not have any relationship with Pine Hill, but know that it is a wonderful place for children to learn. Part of this mission, of course, is to ensure that our teachers and our administration have the most up-to-date and innovative and effective tools at their disposal. So we want to ensure that professional development days are rigorous and fruitful and meaningful to everyone who participates. We want to ensure that teachers and administrative members are ready to go with technology, with creative and safe spaces, with sustainable materials, to ensure that they are well-equipped to navigating the educational journeys of all of our children. In closing, we are so thankful to all of the taxpayers in this town, because it is with their faith and their participation that we are launching generations into the future. And it is because of all of you who are just here and taking time away from your families, from your own busy schedules, and ensuring that we're doing this in a fiscally responsible manner, that's why we're here. So thank you so very much.
Thanks, Christine.
Do you want to throw up the, because then that flows with your being able to jump into comments?
Yep.
So we sort of did a pre-draft of our open hearing for our school committee presentation for you tonight, to sort of just do an overview of the budget. So we'll pull that up, because I think what Christine just did was actually the first bullet on the slide. So we'll go to that second slide.
Yeah, I don't know how to make it bigger. Just hurry.
Do we like get rid of these people?
Yeah, I know. Presenting.
That's okay, I think we can still see. You guys see okay?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, so on this slide, we talked about a little bit about our budget development process, so I think Christine just gave you the school committee's roles and responsibilities, and we'll have Beth hop in on the administration and role and responsibilities.
Sure, so thank you all. I'm Beth McCoy, I'm the proud superintendent of the Dover Sherburne Schools. This is my third year as superintendent. I was five years assistant superintendent before that. I am a Sherburne resident, the mother of two students who went through Pine Hill School and are now at the high school, and hopefully will soon be graduating. And I'm the wife of a DS grad as well, who grew up in Dover. So I too am committed to the town and the schools and my neighbors and my children in making sure that they get the education they deserve. Thank you to all of you for your volunteer time, and I second everything Christine said about our gratitude to the taxpayers for supporting the excellent rigorous education our students deserve. I too want to recognize Dawn, who's an incredible partner in this process, and helps guide the district through this year to year. This is a process that begins in October. When I began as superintendent, I went through the strategic planning process, and we developed a five-year district strategy, which sets the goals for our district. And year to year, our schools work with their school advisory councils to develop school-based improvement goals. So it is the district strategy and the school-based goals that help determine how we use our funding to make sure that we are moving in a direction that all taxpayers and all stakeholders have identified as our route forward. So in October, our principals meet with their instructional leaders, their department chairs, to talk about the needs of each department in each grade level. They develop a building-based budget. They then come to central office, they meet with myself, the assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, the director of student services, the director of educational technology, and of course Dawn, and we look at their budgets holistically to make sure that we are all on the same page in terms of the rigorous education that we're offering, the student support, et cetera. And we, over time, develop the first version of the budget, which therefore goes to the school committees in the late fall. And then over time, throughout the winter, we continue to work with our school committees to develop version 2.0 of the budget, sometimes version 3.0, based on changes that we see with retirement savings, any new information that we get relative to state funding, transportation, healthcare. And it is our goal to develop a fiscally responsible budget that is reduced from version 1 to version 3, that still meets the needs of our students and speaks to our district strategy. So in terms of going over the details of our budget, I will turn it over to Dawn Fedora.
Right, so obviously we're in bullet three, our meeting with you this evening. That's tonight's stuff. And then the last piece we have is our public hearing for the school committee to have an open hearing, and that's an opportunity for community members to join in, hear about the budget at the school level, and ask questions. So that is an opportunity for input from the community. So looking at our budget assumptions, we are looking at regular school operations with level enrollment, so we are maintaining the section composition that we have in this current year's budget. We obviously take into consideration the town's budget guidance, looking to do level funding for Sherburne as much as we can, knowing that we do have a large piece of our budget is personnel, and there are contractual obligations that we have to adhere to. And then, as Beth mentioned, you know, aligning our budget with our district strategies and the school improvement plan. And I think there's many things in the school improvement plan that are dictating some of our personnel in the budget, which I think is important. We do look to tie all that in, so every position that is in the budget, we are saying it's serving a purpose. And then we continue, you know, all year round actually, to assess our student needs, both from a general education and a special education lens. And I will say, the special education lens is where you will see that we potentially have to add positions that we did not have initially in the budget, but we're obligated to provide the services to those students with, who are identified needing additional services based on their individual education plan. So that's an obligation that we must fulfill. So we look at our budget in sort of two pieces. We look at it at the in-district, which is the Pine Hill budget, and then based on the regional agreements, we look, our second piece of our budget is our added district. Know that the added district represents any Sherburne student aged 3 to 22 who are placed in an outside educational placement, that we cannot service them in our district, so they go out of district. So it is interesting, I think it's important to segregate the two, so that you're looking at the cost for in-district Pine Hill, and then separately looking at the added district, because we never want to really see the added district activity impact what we're having to do with our in-district students. So I know this is a little small, but this summarizes a lot of things that were in our budget package. So our payroll represents 87% of our costs. We are very staff-centered in an educational institution. Our contractual increases are 3%, and that's based on ratified agreements. Keep in mind though, that our educator, so our staff that are on the matrix, are also seeing step and lane increases. We estimate that to be additional, say 1.6% on total educator composition. So if we just had compensation, so if we just had only educators in our budget, you would expect to see a 4.6% increase in compensation. But know that it's sort of averaged out with all of our other employee-based contracts, which are all flat rate at 3%. We are also in the last year of all of our association contracts, so know that going into the fall, we will be beginning negotiations with all of our groups. Fortunately, we saw significant salary savings between fiscal year '25 and entering into fiscal year '26. We had two retirements that came in post-budget from last year, and we also had several staffing changes. So that amounted to a savings in our fiscal year '25 budget of about $260,000. We also, in version 2.0, you will see another retirement coming forward that will take place in fiscal year '26, so there was an additional $50,000 savings from that. These cost savings in salary basically mitigated your whole contractual increase for fiscal year '26. So I think that's important to note, that you're seeing a little bit of an anomaly for our increase, based on this exorbitant amount, I think, of salary savings that all came together in one year. Our staffing is based on enrollment and student educational needs. I say that because that's attributed to our special ed students. We have about 20% of our in-district population are on IEPs, so those are the students that you'll see serviced by the category of our special education and related services categories. We did have, and I talk about sometimes we have to shift during the post-budget for student needs. We did see a need to increase our English language learner educator by .2. It's a, sometimes when you see us add these .2s, it's people that we already have in the district who are full-time, and their allocation between our three district shifts. So there was a, we didn't add a .2 person. It was one of our EL educators who services all three districts. It was just a shift in her responsibility of what school she's working in. And we also added a .2 director of pre-K, and that was a position that was sort of deemed to be needed based on the amount of work it's taking. That person oversees preschool in both of our elementary schools. She also serves as our added district coordinator. So it's a combined position, so only a part of, piece of her is charged to Pine Hill's budget for the director of pre-K. She also then serves all three districts in her added district coordinator role. So those were two slight pieces that we had to add, in addition to two special ed EAs. And again, I say that's because sometimes we have to pivot to meet the needs of what's prescribed in IEPs. So that was an approximately increase of $115,000 in this fiscal year '26 budget. Keep in mind, it was also offset by some additional reduction in related services of $48,000 due to the Connections Program moving over to Chicaring. So for those of you who weren't with us last year, it was a special education program that was housed at Pine Hill, that based on, that served both Chicaring and Pine Hill students. So Chicaring had students that came to Pine Hill to attend this program. The cohort shifted in such that the majority of the students were actually coming from Dover, so that whole program shifted over to Chicaring, which helped Pine Hill last year, because we took a lot of salary cost out of Pine Hill's budget that shifted over to Chicaring. And the added district students then, who were going from Pine Hill over to Chicaring, the cost savings was greater than that. So there, again, there was a reduction in your fiscal year '25 budget based on that transfer of that program. During the, we didn't know everything that was going to be attached to that program, so you will see some savings in your fiscal year '25 budget of things that we didn't know. So you've got, you have savings in this year's budget, which we are then also taking out of the fiscal year '26 budget. So some of the, again, the reductions that you're seeing is because we are cleaning out the rest of the additional services that we had built into the budget for the Connections Program. Our student enrollment at Pine Hill remains level in that we have the need for 21 classrooms. We have currently at 385. Our projection's 373, but as you know, that can fluctuate. I think shared in the packet of information was the 10-year history and the five-year projection. We look at both a one-year experience rate and a three-year experience rate, and that's based on looking at enrollment on October 1st. That's looking at both in-migration and out-migration. It has served us pretty well, but obviously in small towns like Dover and Sherburne, things can happen, but at least it gives us a good roadmap to look at. We always look at that five-year projection when we're looking to see if we need to add a section or take away a section, because you never want to be a yo-yo where one year you add, one year you take. If we make any decisions about adding or reducing sections, it's because we see that being the need for the next couple of years. So keep that in mind when you're looking at our classroom sections. We turned a term called trend budgeting, where we do look at, and we don't see too much trend budgeting coming into Pine Hill, because we run that budget so closely, but what we do is where we see things that are continuously not being used, we will reduce the budget. On the flip side, where we see things that we cannot work within that budget, we will slightly add. We are seeing a reduction of $75,000 between '25 and '26. Again, more connections-related operating expenses, but keep in mind also, we added the new math curriculum last year, and it was a one-time expense, and so we are very diligent about pulling out one-time expenses, so it does not stay in the base budget. So that is a reduction that you're seeing from those two components. We do need to increase a few things. Instructional technology is one of those things that's sort of exploding, both from a software, and then device replacement. If you've been with us for a while too, you know, we were very fortunate to get all the COVID money. We purchased new laptops for all of our educators, as well as filling in our needs for the K5, both with the iPads and the Chromebooks. We are now on the fourth year of our devices for our educators, so we are looking to replace those next year. So that is a bump in the budget. We are leasing those. We've decided not to outright buy devices anymore, but we lease them over four years, which helps spread the cost, and it also keeps a more stable budget, so that we don't have to add, ask for $70,000 one year, and then goes away, and then comes back. We started doing lease agreements with the one-to-one here at the middle school. We like how that works, and so any devices that we're buying at that level, we are leasing. And so you will see those lease payments built into the base of the budget, but it should keep a more stable budget from year to year. I also like to just remind people from, as far as in-district, that we do receive Chapter 70 state funding. So the town of Sherburne is receiving a little over, preliminarily, over $900,000 to offset the in-district budget for Pine Hill. So there is some offset, other than taxpayers' funding for public schools.
Sorry, you said $900 from the state?
From the state.
In a single grant?
It is, it's called Chapter 70 funding.
That's 70, okay.
Yeah. You receive that divided by 12 monthly, it comes into. So that's the, sort of the snapshot of what drives our budget for in-district, out-of-district. As I mentioned, it's all Sherburne students who are placed outside of our schools from age 3 to 22. We're projecting 14 placements in fiscal year '26. That is up one placement from fiscal year '25. Our net increase, I'm sorry.
I got it, I'm staying on top of it.
Our net increase in tuition and transportation cost is $140,000. Obviously, when you add a placement, you're going to see an increase in your tuition cost. We're looking at across-the-board school tuition costs at approximately 4% increase, and our transportation cost per mile, which is predominantly, our transportation is all provided by accept, they charge by mile. We're looking at a per-mile increase of about 1.6%, so very modest on that. An offset for added district expenses that you see is what they call circuit breaker reimbursement. And so it's a little bit of a complicated reimbursement formula, but basically it says a district is responsible for four times the foundation rate, which comes to be about, for fiscal year '25, it's, I think it's just around $50,000. So if we spend $75,000 on an outplacement, we're responsible for the first 50. The extra 25%, we do get 75% reimbursement on. So they do look at circuit breaker reimbursement on a placement by placement basis, and starting three years ago, they actually incorporated transportation also as part of that. So we get reimbursement on tuition and transportation as long as it exceeds that threshold. And so we are estimating to use $400,000 to offset added district. So the budget that you're seeing is net of that $400,000. So keep in mind, your gross added district budget is what you see in our budget plus the $400,000. I think that's important to understand, in case, you know, circuit breaker comes and goes. I mean, circuit breaker's been very reliable as far as getting 100% of our mandated reimbursement, but I think it's always important to see that your total cost is that, what we have in our budget, plus circuit breaker. So where does that bring us with all of our drivers? Well, your fiscal year '26 operating budget is an increase of 2.31%. Again, we like to look at it in our components. The in-district is .7% increase. So with all the salary savings that we were able to realize, there is a minimal increase from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26 on the in-district budget. Obviously, the added district, we talked about the increases, that represents a 13.88% increase. So it's very important not to look at the gross, I think, for both Dover and Sherburne elementary districts to look at, but at the two pieces separated out. And I've shared with you also where we were in fiscal year '25, which from an in-district was still a little bit of a lower number than you typically see at the 2.73. I did go back and look just for some perspective, and in fiscal year '24, the increase was a little over 4%. In fiscal year '23, the in-district was 5%, but in '22, we must have had another banner year with cost savings from salary, because it was less than 1%. So here gives you your categories of how we sort of look at the budget, and as you can see, if you look at salaries and other compensation, you see very little increase, right? Because all that savings offset the contractual increases. And our other educational expenditures, because of the reductions that we have for the one-time expenses for math, and also the Connections Program, we're also seeing, even though we added things to the budget, you're still seeing a reduction. We are out to contract right now on our transportation contract. We do, in the year that we're going out for contract, put a pretty significant reserve there to cover ourselves. That contract is going to be open, the bid opening is on Wednesday, so I will have the numbers at that point. But based on, I've been through two of them now, there is a tendency, if our existing contractor is the winning bid, that they sort of front-load the first year, because we've been on a contract with them for five years. I think they look at it as a little bit of a catch-up. And then we see smaller increases in the outer years. So we'll see how that plays out, but that is how that was budgeted. And then buildings and grounds, the increase of $12,005 represents utility increases, which I think you'll see similar increases at the town and every place else, just with the way utility market is going right now. So that shows you really the basics of the .7%. Again, it's salaries is what's driving this, and that we had all those savings. And then you'll see the corresponding components of your added district, and how we are seeing an increase in that. So theoretically, your added district budget is really $1,005,000 in total expenditures, if you add in the circuit breaker that we're offsetting.
Could you just say again, on the transportation line for OOD, the jump in '26?
Yes, so that was based on the, a lot of it was changes in placements. We had students who changed their placements, and there's more mileage associated with that. So it wasn't like we necessarily saw more students being transported, it's where they were being transported to. In addition, there is some additional monitoring costs and such on some of our current cohort of students that's also driving that.
It's a big change.
Yeah, but keep in mind that we will hopefully see some reimbursement-
Right, next year.
-against that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so looking at-
I'm just sorry, I think that-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I thought you were complete with your presentation, so I didn't interrupt.
Oh yeah, we've got a couple more slides.
Please.
Then I'll be. So we also like to look at our budget in, okay, so what part of our budget is strictly looking at servicing students at Chicaring? So our staffing for that component is about 5.1 million. I've given you the categories and the number of FTEs on each of that, and then also broken apart that, in our budget expenditures that are directly related to educational services is about $250,000. That represents 75% of our in-district budget, but I like to look at it that way, just so another breakout of, you know, how we manage our budget. And then the other component-
Okay.
Oops, sorry.
That's all right.
Is obviously the administrative and related support services. So that's the shared central office, you know, we all work for all three districts. It's also your building-based administrators. It is also- It is also facilities. So we're lumping in here the cost of the building. So it's one point two million in sort of the overhead for administrative salaries, and then looking at the expenditures in that six hundred and fifty is the cost of maintaining the building, our transportation costs, and sort of our general non-instructional operating expenses that we incur. So that's the other twenty-five percent of our in-district budget. Keep in mind that, what you don't see in our budget, but you'll see in the region's budget, is the, sort of, the employee benefits side, some of the insurance side, because that all sits at the town budget. So I always say, be careful when you're looking at computing per pupil costs, that you realize that it's not fully loaded if you look at just our budget. And then we also just like to highlight, oh, we're, I'm sorry, I saw the correct one. So out-of-district, obviously tuition, the net is eight hundred and ninety, so that's where I say add the four hundred thousand in. We're projecting the fourteen placements. We sort of like to sort of show you the age groups, because obviously, they'll progress as they continue to move up to the twelfth or age twenty-two. So we have five placements at the pre-K to fifth-grade level, six placements from six to twelve, and we do have three placements that we will be covering those individual students until the age of twenty-two. And then you can see our transportation costs, where we highlight that we do transport the majority of our students through a collaborative that we're members of. By being part of that collaborative, a van may be going to the same school and picking up a student from Sherburne, maybe Medfield, so we share in those costs, and that's actually is immensely helpful. I mean, you think our transportation costs seem high, but if we did that on our own, it will probably be four times as much. So working through the collaborative and cost-sharing with that is very beneficial to both of our towns. And then we just want to highlight what sits outside of the general fund that we do rely on for some operations, and these represent federal and state grants. We get a special education grant that we predominantly use to fund some of our special education, educational assistant positions. Sherburne, based on their makeup, gets a REIT grant, which is a rural county grant, and we use that to cover literacy support positions. That's approximately fifty thousand on an annual basis. And then we have some various other title grants that we use for mentoring, tutoring support, additional professional development, approximately thirty thousand. So let me stop there before I hop into capital and see what questions or discussion items you may have on the in-district or the out-of-district.
Stephen, you want to start?
Yes, thank you. Do I have permission to maybe have five minutes with a series of questions, or are we going to restrict it to one question at a time?
Why don't you just fire away and say, here we go?
Yeah. Okay, because I don't want to take time away from other members.
Yeah, or maybe do, maybe do a few, and then we can let other people jump in and come back. We should have time to get to everybody's questions and everything.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for your patience while I asked some of these questions out of newness to the organization. Just as a general question, are elementary schools ranked in Massachusetts?
Not officially. They're ranked by certain magazines that are for-profit, based on equations that they come up with, that don't actually represent the achievement of our students.
Okay, so there's no state-level analysis or ranking?
No.
Is there, is there a set of standards that the state looks at to see if an elementary school's within standards?
Yes, they look at several factors, including our MCAS achievements, they look at attendance rates, they look at teacher licensure, and they, you know, we have fractions of DESI, the Department of Education, come and visit us to do audits of our records and to visit classrooms and speak with stakeholders every few years, and they kind of rotate through topics and areas of the system to look at.
So at the completion of that, does the state assign a number, a percentage, or some numerical analysis of what they've done?
Well, they indicate whether or not we're making progress towards the targets that are set.
Targets set by the state?
Set by the state, based on MCAS scores.
So where does, where does this, where does Pine Hill fall within that?
They're making progress, they're en route to meeting standards.
Have they been within standards in the past?
Yes.
And it's fallen below the standard?
No.
One of the things that kind of popped out at me is I was looking at the, at the student population, and I, it looks like, unless I'm reading the numbers incorrectly, the population is declining a bit.
Mm-hmm.
At the, after, so, and then, then based upon the demographic, you determine class size?
Based on the, no, the class size, school committee has a guideline for class size.
Okay, so on one of these pages, I don't have a page number, unfortunately, it looks like the target is eighteen to twenty-three.
Yes.
It looks like grade three and five potentially could have a section reduction. And I'm just curious as to what conversation has been around that, and what you're thinking is?
Good, we don't, and as I prefaced it too, by saying, we don't like to reduce a section if we think we're going to need it in a subsequent year. And we also look at the cohort of students, and sometimes if you reduce a section, and you may be below, you may go above in certain circumstances, but they...
Yeah, it looks like the trend, though, is pretty consistent. So I only point out, for example, for fiscal twenty-six, potentially in grade three...
Right, so I would say we also look at the cohort of students. I mean, this is a discussion that we've had, and that is a, you know, we look at that as a class that came out of the COVID, still needs a lot of support, and has probably a demographic that has higher IEP numbers in there, so we're very strategic about making sure that we are supporting that. So not only do we look at numbers, we also talk about the cohort of students in that grade. I will tell you, we're very, we definitely increase, we definitely reduce sections, we definitely look at that very closely. In the counterparts in Dover, we're actually reducing a section next year. So, but we don't like to do it one year and then see what's going to happen the next year. We like to see a trend that we're going to reduce a section, and we're going to be fine with not having that section for several years.
Right, it makes sense, because, well, because it's the same number that's going through.
Right.
So...
So there's a desire not to be on the higher end for that particular grade, based on circumstances.
Right, okay, as long as, as long as I hear that it's being thought about.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, we definitely had that whole conversation with the building principal, that we're always looking to see that we're following protocols and that we have sudden in place.
And my, two last questions. Thank you for being tolerant. Education, educational assistance seems to be like one of the single largest increases. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So in numbers or in dollars?
In dollars.
Well, we had to add two special education, two special education, educational assistance in fiscal year twenty-five, based on student needs.
Okay, so I think you had mentioned that, I'm sorry, I didn't have that together. Now I have two others. In the, in the high school, there's a revenue page, because what you presented for the elementary school is the expenses, but it's not necessarily the net cost, because revenue may have increased or decreased as well.
So the only revenue you have is the Chapter Seventy that we, that I highlighted, that nine hundred thousand?
But there was some other, you had some other things on that page, grants.
Revenues?
Yeah, and the previous page.
Oh, the grants, oh, the grants is not, is not, grants is not, there are expenses not in this budget.
Oh, so it's a dollar-for-dollar?
Mm-hmm.
Rev, okay.
Yeah, so I always highlight those, because if we didn't have those grants, we might need to see, we might need to put those in our operating budget. So I like to say, this is your operating budget, but no, we get grants outside of this budget that help us support the school in this way.
Okay, so those costs related to execution of the grant, they're not included in the budget?
Are not in your budget.
Is that the same process for the high school as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the region has revenue, because we're our own little town. So you see revenue statement, because we actually, you give us assessments, but we run the whole operation here.
Okay, so my last thought is, and you've probably thought about this too, is having a budget for what I would call shared services, because apparently, now it's broken out into how you allocate it to each school, right? So if a, if a person is the, a special education person, they're spending sixty percent of their time on property A and forty percent of property B, that, that's what's appearing in the budget. But I don't know that as a reviewer, we see the entire cost, because you'd have to take the two budgets and add them together. So I think as a, as a process, it might be interesting in fiscal twenty-seven to create a shared services budget, and then allocate that budget to the appropriate system, to the appropriate building.
So it's only, so the shared costs are mainly the amounts like us.
Right.
And so they're...
Well, you may have others too, because you're, you must be thinking about how to get economies of scale and purchasing and...
So we have a few, oh, well, we do, we definitely, we act like we're a K-12, we do do, we do get benefits when we present ourselves to a vendor and say, we're, we're three districts, we're going to give you three checks, you give us a contract, though, we're going to give you three separate checks. We do do that.
Right.
I mean, you could, you could...
But there must be more, the administration is a shared service, but I imagine there...
And then since, each of our shared costs, it's in all three budgets.
I, I understand.
So you want to see it all together.
That's just a thought, because I think it would be more informative that, no gross and then how it's allocated.
It's going to look really good, because we run really lean.
Good, that's, that's something that would be very helpful to know.
What you're, what you're envisioning is like one more table that just does a gross-up of the allocation of shared services across the three different programs, and here's just one table of...
Correct.
The budget numbers for shared services.
Exactly right, and then how, and then how it's allocated, or the rationale for allocation.
Yeah, and I will say, every position has a little bit of a different percentage allocation based on the workload.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Who else? Got a couple, go ahead, Doug.
So just building on Stephen's comments, excuse me, I understand that the state doesn't have any rankings of schools, they're just some private, you know, for-profit, U.S. News and World Report, that kind of thing. But in fairness, those rankings, you know, while perhaps imperfect, do take into account things like MCAS scores. And I know, Beth, you just told us that Pine Hill, for example, has been operating at expected performance levels, and is improving. You know, in the world I live in, we have an expression for all of the companies I work with, which is if, if we're not getting better, we're getting worse. So I looked at the Pine Hill Improvement Plan, also the Dover Sherburne Regional Plan, but it appears to have a tremendous amount of wording around, you know, best practices, student voice, communication strategy, professional development, connections with caregivers, et cetera, et cetera. I didn't see a lot of wording around academic success or specific goals around academic achievement, things like test score metrics, other than things like, an anticipated outcome is improved test scores on MCAS or IXL. So my question is, for Pine Hill, for example, year to year to year, let's go back three or four years, are test scores improving, or are they not improving? Because I note that the U.S. News and World Report ranking of the school has got us now at two forty-seven, which is lower than it historically has been, so are we really improving or are we falling behind, is my question?
So to answer the question about U.S. News, their ranking is based, they take into consideration the race of our students and our socioeconomic status, and they create a projected what they think we should achieve on MCAS, and that's fifty percent of our score. Then they take what we actually, how we actually achieve on MCAS, and just see what the discrepancy is, and then they rank us. So that is not based on merit and actual achievement, so I think we need to put that aside. In terms of MCAS scores, we have seen some fluctuations, and if you look at the School Improvement Plan, and this was presented when we went over the MCAS data earlier this fall with the Sherburne School Committee, that much of what's in the School Improvement Plan, which of course is listed in, or linked to the District Improvement Plan, those changes and those focal points would have a positive impact on increasing scores. We realize there is room for growth, and we are doing everything within our means to support them. In terms of personnel, we've changed assignments and had changes in staffing. We have hired a full-time math coach for each of our elementary schools, which is just new as of this year, and we're conducting an instructional leadership study. If you look at, just based on merit and achievement, the few schools that are ahead of us in MCAS all have K to five academic coordinators, one for literacy and one for math, and multiple coaches for literacy and math. We have zero curriculum coordinators for elementary math and elementary literacy. We have one coach for each and each building. So we do not have the same resources as the other schools, and we just made a point five increase this year, hoping for some help with the implementation of a new math program.
And Beth, those would be like Wellesley and Weston, for example.
But if it looked like, you know, our MCAS scores, I don't know the exact number, but it was in the high thirties for both math and reading, it, Pine Hill were not performing at or above the expected level.
No, if you look at our report card, we are making substantially, we're making substantial progress towards our targets this year. Last year, we were meeting or exceeding.
Well, I get that we're making progress towards our targets, I'm just wondering where we are year to year and compared to what I would think of as our peer schools. I mean, I don't think, I don't think of Sherburne as being compared to Lowell or Brockton, I think us, we're compared to Weston or Wellesley or Dover, you know, comparable suburban schools.
Yeah, and, and they fluctuate from year to year, but we're usually within the same realm. So for example, if you just looked at MCAS scores, grade four English at Pine Hill were ranked twenty-sixth out of three hundred districts. In grade five math, we're ranked seventeen out of three hundred districts. Now, this group of students moves forward each year, so it's a different test and a different group of kids, and as Dawn mentioned, the number of special education students in any given cohort changes. So there's fluctuations, there's also changes in teaching staff, whether we're getting new teachers to save money from retirements, whether we're changing teachers' grades, there's lots of factors. I will tell you that, of course, MCAS are important to us, and we want our students to achieve, and as I was starting to go through the list, between looking at data, having data team meetings, doing student interventions, implementing a new math program, using more diagnostic testing in math, using evidence-based interventions, starting to look at a new literacy program, using more diagnostic data in literacy K to five, using evidence-based interventions in phonics, and launching the literacy program review, all of these things that we're putting in place, cost-neutral, will positively affect MCAS and all of the other data points that we look at throughout the year, including our DIBELS scores, which we're now using K to five.
Sorry, what is that score?
DIBELS, it's your reading proficiency levels, and it's done three times a year. MCAS is one day, one shot in time, and there has been an increase in the at or above literacy benchmarks for the last three years. We've increased the number of students who are reading at or above grade-level benchmark. So there's progress.
Related question, have we had substantial turnover of long-tenured teachers at Pine Hill?
So this year was a, we had, yes, there was a lot of new hires this year, not new positions, but new hires to replace people who either left to take a change in position due to life circumstances or retired. And we do hire young, new teachers to save money, to reduce the, you know, cost of our salary increases.
So this is probably just a generalization, but in my experience, a twenty, thirty-year tenured teacher is going to be a better teacher than a twenty-two-year-old teacher who's just starting out, on average.
In general, I mean...
Are we, so are we replacing long-tenured teachers with relatively inexperienced younger teachers?
Yes, and I will say, though, you know, similar to baseball and football, you do have some teachers who come straight out of college and are rock stars, and are veteran teachers can learn from. So it's not always the case.
No, I get it, it's a general...
But certainly, they... I also add, if they're not performing, we, we don't have, we don't renew their contract. So we're not, you don't buy them for their whole life.
Yeah.
And are there any underlying trends around retirements, or whether it's retirement or moving to another district in terms of exit interviews, comments about the school, the environment, the leadership, is there, are there any themes there?
No, I would say not. I mean, generally, if you look in all three of our districts, teachers who come and... I mean, generally, if you look in all three of our districts, teachers who come and start working for us, stay with us, which is why many of our, you know, the average teaching years of service is well over 15, you know, across the system. You know, people have babies, people move, people have family situations, there hasn't been any negative feedback as to why people have left unless we have perhaps given them constructive feedback and they haven't liked it.
Do, do we do exit interviews with teachers?
We do, yes. Good question.
In the essence of time, because I know we have a busy agenda, are there any other budget-specific questions that you guys have?
I, sorry.
I had some stuff, but I'll save it for our discussion.
So I had one more question.
We do need to get out of the next thing.
Quick point, Dawn, I asked you about this the other day, so in the collective argument, apparently teachers are required to have 30 hours of DEI training. I just sort of did a simple math, it's, you know, 100 teachers, that's, you know, three and a half, four days of, of teacher's time, that's 354 teaching days, is that something we really need to be doing, is, why is that in the?
So it's something that happens outside of the contractual day. Our new teachers, within their first three years, if they were hired after this July 1st, are required to do that. Veteran teachers who have been here four or more years, it's optional for them to do that, they don't have to do that. And if anybody has taken a course either through their undergraduate, graduate program or extended learning that matches the objectives, then they don't have to take it for us, they've already done it.
And that's in the CBA, right?
That's in the CBA, yes, and it was, you know, something brought forward by the educators, it's something that many times have been doing. When I started my teaching career 20 years ago, it was in that contract then, we just brought it in now.
Is that something we envision keeping?
That would be something that we'd have to work through with the teachers' union.
Great, new contract coming next year. Maybe else on budget stuff before we wrap up? Okay, thank you.
Okay, again, if you have any other questions, feel free, and then we are doing our open budget hearing on the 11th, if there's, want to come hear the presentation, yes.
And again, I'm also available to have additional conversation about any points of interest.
Thanks for, thanks for going through this. All right, so we're going to leave our meeting open.
Yep, we've got everyone else.
I'm going to walk you guys.
Oh, great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you so much, everyone. It's so lovely to see you all.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too, thanks. Hey, Mark.
Hey.
Good, how are you?
Thanks.
Well, we could, but I didn't, I mean, I didn't think we should jam into the advisory budget.
Last year, we folded pieces of paper and just were.
Yeah, so maybe. For the public hearing, we might, yeah, I might, I used to do it for my students, so we might do tatty cards.
It's just going to be.
Yeah.
Proposals.
Yeah.
Go ahead and grab seats.
Okay.
Because that's all. The goal is to have everyone around the table.
Somebody should grab.
Maybe one should.
Catch up.
Yeah.
Grab.
Yeah.
Correct, correct, yes.
Now, what are you, how are you working past the, the Sherburne finance?
This is real, you want to take it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, cool.
So just so everyone knows, Sherburne Advisory is already in session, so we just need Regent and Advisory.
So we can add ourselves in once we have a quorum. So, well.
Yes, Nora in the background.
And actually, Colleen Ver is unable to be here in person tonight because she joined the Lincoln.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have it, I mean, if you want it, you're welcome to.
No, no, so, yeah. So I, who's the other nice lady? Yeah, Angie and I, I have a proposal that was brought up.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have an extra.
Right, right. Block morning.
Correct, correct, yes.
Now, what are you, how are you working past the, the Sherburne finance?
This is real, you want to take it?
Great.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, cool. So just so everyone knows, Sherburne Advisory is already in session, so we just need Regent and Advisory.
So we can add ourselves in once we have a quorum. So, well.
Yes, Nora in the background.
And actually, Colleen Ver is unable to be here in person tonight because she joined the Lincoln.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have it, I mean, if you want it, you're welcome to.
No, no, so, yeah. So I, who's the other nice lady? Yeah, Angie and I, I have a proposal that was brought up.
All right, welcome, everyone, and thank you. I'd like to call to order this meeting at the Region, of the Regional School Committee. Tonight is Wednesday, February 12th, and we are meeting in the Dover Sherburne Middle School Library. The time is now 6:30.
I'll do the same call to order of the Dover Warner Committee.
Great, thanks. So, our budget, our budget first.
Yeah, we'll do this first. So I'll just start, so we are carving out a little bit of tonight's meeting in order to be able to share with many, as people as we can, a presentation about the one capital project that the region is bringing forward, and that's the replacement of our current turf, track, fencing and lights. We have engaged with Activitas, who actually worked with us on our press box and bleacher replacement, and they're our partner in this project, and we have Mark Novak and Ben McDonough here tonight to do a presentation. So they have a, a brief presentation, and then we are going to open up for questions. This is being taped, I just wanted to sort of just set the stage a little bit too, that this is a field, turf field that was installed in 2012, and it was a gift to the region from the DS Boosters, with the understanding that the replacement then would be the responsibility of the region to take on thereafter, and this, here we are 13 years later. And I would like to introduce Mark.
Can I go up here?
Yep, you can go up to the front.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. Again, my name is Mark Novak, I'm a design principal with Activitas, we're based out of Dedham, Mass. We focus landscape architecture and civil engineering on recreational and athletic work, so about 90% of our work is athletic and recreational based. And we've been fortunate enough to work with Dover Sherburne Middle School before, as Dawn mentioned, on the leisure projects. So, as you know, we're here tonight to talk about the track and field replacement project. Next slide, please.
Yeah, sorry, I already have you. Okay, so what I'm going to do is we're just going to go here, and you're going to have to just scroll through.
That works.
Okay.
Unfortunately, anybody online is not going to see the slides, we'll have to send them after.
Okay, yeah, we don't have IT here tonight, Beth and I are on.
We're on a lean ship because we're IT as well.
Can we make this full screen, I can't read though.
Yes.
Okay.
We're just, yeah, just, I think you can blow it out to like a full, full screen.
We'll text that.
So, I've introduced myself, Ben in the back, he's our civil designer, he worked with us on the bleacher project as well. But really, just want to quickly explain what is being proposed for the renovation project. So, three questions, why are we here, where are we now with the design of the project, and where do we hope to be going? As part of the project, we've been working closely with Dawn and John, and Cam, and Emily and Chris, but we've also had a meeting where Angie and Kevin took place, and we talked a little bit about synthetic turf, track surfacing, and what we want to see as part of the renovation project. And then at the end, we'll have some time where you guys can hammer me with questions, and I'll do my best to address them. So why are we here? As Dawn mentioned, previously to the synthetic turf field, it was a natural grass field. And notice the outline of the track. In the D area to the right, it was just this square where you had the high jump area, and in the D area to the left, the D area is the shape that's made in the infield at the turn of the track, is your long and triple jump pits, but they don't extend all the way to the track. And obviously, in the middle, is a natural grass field. So in 2012, this image was in 2010, in 2012, the field was converted to synthetic turf, and there were some minor expansions to the running track. There it is. So as you can see, you can still see that rectangular area, new asphalt base was added, and then resilient track surfacing was added in the corners of the D area, and then the long and triple jump area was extended all the way to the inside edge of the track, okay? All of the natural grass surfacing was removed, drainage system was installed, channel drain was installed all the way around the inside perimeter of the track, and then synthetic turf was installed on top. That was 13 years ago. So in terms of synthetic turf, you've gotten your money's worth out of that carpet, and I think that's a testament to the work that your facilities crew has put into maintaining this field, because I know that that facility is very heavily used, not only by your athletic programs here, but there's a lot of community-based use on that as well.
Is that typical use, typical lifespan?
Typical lifespan for a synthetic turf field, we tell our clients to expect somewhere between eight to 10 years, depending on use. Have we seen longer? Absolutely, but it really comes down to how much you maintain it and how much use you put into it, okay? And additionally, you know, we'll get into some of the images of why we're getting to this point, but there's nothing that stops the sun from shining on it, and that UV degradation of the turf fibers is what really starts to break things down. And when a field starts to fail, it isn't this gradual decline, it's more of a cliff that you drop off of, and it, and it really goes downhill very, very quickly. So, yes.
Does anyone other than Dover Sherburne Middle School and High School teams use this?
Yes.
Who?
I actually have a list. So Dover Sherburne Youth Field Hockey and Youth Lacrosse use it, Assuring Soccer uses it, Dedham Sherburne Resident Soccer, Relay for Life, Top Soccer, Charles River School.
Sorry, I don't need the names. Do we get revenue from non-school users and how much do we get?
I.
Yes, we do get some revenue, but for our, our youth programs, we, it's a very minimal charge.
I'm thinking ahead, has anyone done the analysis of revenue versus depreciation? Should we be letting anyone else other than the school use it? Has anyone done that analysis?
We, we should.
So next time, this'll last 14 years instead of eight years, or whatever, you know what I mean?
I don't think that that is, there, the usage has some play, but just the number of years and where it's exposed to the UV light, it's not going to.
Well, can you tell me, is usage an issue?
It is an issue, I mean, it's a combination of issues, but it's not the only thing that causes the, the failure of the carpet. You know, anyone that's out there using the field, they're causing friction on the fibers, and it's causing those fibers to, over time, wear out. What really causes the fibers to completely fail is the UV degradation. There are UV stabilizers and inhibitors in the turf fibers, but they have a half-life, so over time, those don't work, it's just like any kind of synthetic. So, if you could go to the next slide.
Can I just ask, has there been, has there been an improvement in the technology or the material that you use for these in the 10 to 12 years?
There has, there has. So, that generation, UV inhibitors are better, heat resistant, technology is better, so these fields do get a little bit warm, but much like, you know, when I was a kid, if I sat in the front seat of my parents' car with shorts on on a hot day, I would burn the back of my legs on, on the synthetic material in the car seat. That doesn't happen anymore because that same type of technology is pumped into the synthetic turf fibers, and it helps reflect some of the solar rays that come down and hit the field. So yes, it is more durable, but it's not more durable to the point where we're talking about, you know, expect 15 years out of the carpet. I still think, you know, that 10-year range, you have to really start considering, looking at that carpet and, and talking about replacement.
Is there just one particular carpet that everybody uses?
No.
Or are there choices?
No, there's, there's plenty of choices, and we competitively will bid, we will competitively bid this, considering this is a, a public project, this is what we'll have to bid, and there are a host of different manufacturers that will supply, or could potentially supply the carpet for this project. What we do is we create an experience and qualification-based specification that will give the exact type of system that we want, that all the manufacturers can create, but we give experience-based requirements to make sure that we're not getting a fly-by-night turf company out of Dalton, Georgia that says, hey, I'm Joe's turf, you know, here's my product. What happens if they go out of business next week? So there are certain manufacturers that have been in the game, Field Turf, Sprint Turf, Astro Turf, Shaw, that provide very good durable products and have been in the game for long enough where we know that they'll be here 10, 12, 15 years from now. So if you should run into a warranty issue, they'll be around and they can address it.
But for each of those brands, are each of those products the same, or are there different features?
They're very minor in differences, but what they need to do is they need to meet our specification. So our specification is not an off-the-shelf product, it is actually tailored, and then they have to meet the requirements of the specification. So one of the first things we noticed out there are the seams. So when these carpets come in, they're coming in 15-foot or five-yard rolls, and then they're seen together across the middle of the field. Right now, when you go out there every five yards, you'll notice a very apparent seam going across the field. That wasn't that way when this field was originally installed, and that's one of the first signs of, you know, your carpet is coming of age. There is a strength that is being lost in that union of the two panels, and is, will lead over time to failures in those seams. Next slide. Another thing is, as we talked about the UV degradation, we talked about, you know, there are stabilizers in them, but over time, those stabilizers lose their effect, and the sun takes its toll. So when you go out and take a look at some of the lines out there, like the yellow lines, the red lines, they've seen much more wear than the green, because the UV inhibitors in the colors like yellow and red, in the older generations, the carpet didn't stand up as well to the UV. So there's a little bit of a dip when you go from the green turf down to the red, but also the green turf. What happens when the UV breaks the carpet down, or the fibers of the carpet down, the fibers become very brittle and they break off. So I'm sure if you have student athletes on the field that are children, and they come home, and they're a soccer player, their socks have all little pieces of, of carpet in them, and that's a sign that they need to be replaced. The high-use areas are the first to go, so the creases of lacrosse, in between the hash marks of football, in the gold mouth of soccer, and you can see in the next slide, some of the areas have been repaired, okay? And these areas in the lacrosse crease, you can see a new patch of turf has gone in there, very unsafe from a ball roll perspective, if you're playing field hockey out there and your goal is behind this, and a ball is hit and it comes across. There is a strength that is being lost in that union of the two panels and is, will lead over time to failures in those seams. Next slide. Another thing is, as we talked about the UV degradation. We talked about, you know, there are stabilizers in them, but over time, those stabilizers lose their effect. And the sun takes its toll. So, when you go out and take a look at some of the lines out there, like the yellow lines, the red lines, they've seen much more wear than the green because the UV inhibitors in the colors like yellow and red in the older generations, the carpet didn't stand up as well to the UV. So, there's a little bit of a dip when you go from the green turf down to the red. But also the green turf. What happens when the UV breaks the carpet down or the fibers of the carpet down? The fibers become very brittle and they break off. So, I'm sure if you have student athletes on the field that are children and they come home and they're a soccer player, their socks have all little pieces of carpet in them. And that's a sign that they need to be replaced. The high-use areas are the first to go. So, the creases of lacrosse, in between the hash marks of football, in the gold mouth of soccer. And you can see in the next slide, some of the areas have been repaired, okay? And these areas in the lacrosse crease, you can see a new patch of turf has gone in there. Very unsafe from a ball roll perspective. If you're playing field hockey out there and your goal is behind this and a ball is hit and it comes across this, it's going to cause it to skip up and hit someone. You know, it's, this is very common towards the end of the useful life of a carpet, trying to extend it a couple more years. But once you get to this point, it's time to consider another carpet. Another thing is impact attenuation, so the firmness of the surface. This field is crumb rubber and sand infill. That gives you the resilient characteristics of natural grass in a synthetic surface. Over time, that compacts to a point where you'll reach critical firmness and it becomes very, very hard. So, if you're a student athlete and you fall and you whiplash and hit your head on the carpet, you're risking severe concussion or injury. We have not tested for that out here. And the reason for that is if we tested for that, there is the potential that you might have to shut your facility down. Next slide, please. The track is of the same condition. Lots of structural cracks, degradation of the surface. This right here is in the D area. This is the old asphalt. This is the new asphalt that was installed in 2012. So, they didn't replace all the asphalt out there. Your asphalt underneath your track is over 20 years old, needs to be replaced. The good news is, it's not, you're not seeing a lot of heating and elevation changes. It's just a lot of structural cracks. So, the asphalt has worn out, but you don't have any base issues. So, as part of this construction project, we're proposing that we go in, pull off the surfacing, get rid of that and then recycle and place the existing asphalt. Incorporate that into the stone base, can properly compact it and then we can come in with a new asphalt layer and a new 13-millimeter urethane running track surface. Some repairs have been attempted on the cracks. As you can see, you know, right here, repairs have been made, but really it's just a band-aid and a very temporary band-aid at that. They won't last more than a year. And these repairs typically, aesthetically, they're not great, but aesthetics isn't a huge issue, in my opinion. It's more the consistency of the repair. It is much firmer and at times softer. It's never really the same consistency as a running track surface immediately adjacent to it. And as I previously mentioned, you know, those cracks just immediately reflect through because it's a failure in the base. All right? Any questions on the existing conditions?
So, just on the track, you're saying, remove the track, remove the asphalt, recompact the base, which is what?
It's like a dense-grated crushed stone.
Okay. Recompact that, then put in asphalt again?
New asphalt, yeah.
And then the 13-millimeter track?
You got it, yeah. So, one of the things that we're very cognizant of is not trying to recreate the wheel here and doing a life-for-life renovation as much as we potentially can. So, all the drainage around the inside, we're going to salvage and keep in place. All this existing stone base underneath the synthetic turf field, we're going to test and make sure that it's draining at an appropriate rate. But we're going to, we're going to keep that, just regrade that and then put a new carpet down.
Where I was going with that is if this was a complete green field, would you build the track this way?
If it was a complete what?
Just a green field, like nothing was there.
Okay.
Build the track, would you build it this way?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, we would have to take out the top soil and bring in a dense-grated crushed stone.
But it would be crushed stone, asphalt.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there's only one track in my 25-year career as an athletic landscape architect that we did differently than an asphalt base and that was post-tensioned concrete over... And I didn't even design it. It's the only one that I've ever worked on and was just doing repairs on it over at CM in West Roxbury. And that's because it's built over a bog and it didn't have structural properties in the subgrade. So, all tracks are built that way, even at the highest levels of sport. So, this is the proposed surfacing. It's a urethane track. It's called the pavement structural spray, 13-millimeters. So, it's black urethane and crumb rubber that gets paved with a small paving machine. And then they come out and they spray the coloring on top. And then they do the line striping and markings around the track. In terms of the synthetic surface, what we're talking about is taking the existing carpet, cutting it up in place and then shipping it off. And this is something I'm particularly excited about. There is coming online this spring, a synthetic turf recycling facility in the Commonwealth down in Rockland, Mass. So, 100% of this carpet, well, I shouldn't say 100%, 99% of the carpet can be completely recycled and repurposed. So, we're talking about shipping it down there. They're going to clean all the existing infill, ship that back and then the carpet will be recycled. The fibers get sheared off and recycled into, turned into pellets and then turned into like plastic lumber and stuff like that. And then the backing of the carpet gets pulverized into a dust that used, that gets used as an amendment in products like concrete and stuff like that. So, that's pretty exciting. The proposed carpet will be a dual-fiber carpet. Don't want to get too much into the details of the carpet system, but I think the good thing to note about that is dual fiber gives you the best of both worlds in synthetic turf. It gives you durability in terms of fibers and it gives you playability for ball control, especially for soccer. And one of the big things that we talked about including in this project, and this is one of the enhancements that we are entertaining for this project, is installing a resilient underlayment under the field, so a concussion pad. You know, from our opinion, and it's just our humble opinion, but it's short dollars to protect your student athletes. You don't feel it when you're running around on a field, but if you are a soccer player or a goalkeeper and your legs get taken out from underneath you and you come down on your head or a football player, you're going to want that pad there. There's a lot of data on it. A lot of R and D went into the development of this particular product and there's tons of safety information that we could provide for it. And then finally, the line layout and field graphics. So, this is, this is a sample of the pad. It's all, it's recyclable. It's not cradle recyclable, but it's recyclable. It's warranted for 16 years. So, when you have to replace your carpet again, you can reuse the same pad. And one of the good things about having a pad is when you replace the carpet again, you have the pad that you can work on and you don't necessarily have to come in and wipe out the entire base and regrade it again. Excellent. So, lights is another enhancement that we were talking about. I think you're...
Perhaps before we move on, can I ask you a question? And it might be naive, but has there been any studies done on the relative costs and benefits of natural turf fields as opposed to synthetic ones?
Yeah, yeah. So, we've done that quite often for our clients. When it comes down to it, synthetic turf is obviously a much larger initial investment, all right? When you take into account maintenance, field replacements, even a synthetic turf field replacement over, you know, relatively long term of time, let's say 24 years, the cost per use is cheapest with synthetic turf.
And you'd have to replace it two and a half times in 24 years?
Two times. Well, 20 years, I'm sorry. You're right. 20 years, 24 years, but it's cost per use. And because this can take so much more use, the cost per use is much cheaper. And the ability to play on it in inclement weather, shortly after even significant rainfall events, you know, having a natural grass field around here and you have beautiful ones on campus. Don't get me wrong. Chris does a great job of them. But when you have a campus like this, having a workhorse in synthetic turf is something that we typically think is advantageous because you can just, after those rainfall events, focus all of your athletic requirements on that one surface.
So, sorry, to that point, how compelling is the economic difference?
I can provide it to you.
But I mean, is there a rule of thumb? It's half the price over 20 years, like what's the...
No, I'd have to go back and look at it. I don't know off the top of my head.
It'd be interesting to get the...
Yeah, I'm happy to provide that. I'm happy to send that along.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that too because there's also the concept of the limiting use of the grass field to, you know, the DS teams, right?
Right.
That's why you have to do it in a broader cost analysis.
There's no sunlight degradation to grass.
Technical costs.
But limiting the use would probably help extend the lifespan. I'd be curious to know the cost, Jim.
So, with grass, would we need an irrigation system?
You would need an irrigation system. You would have to fertilize, you'd have to mow, you'd have, you know, there's... And all those costs are taken into account in that cost-benefit analysis. You know, there's re-sodding, there's re-seeding, there's proper cultural maintenance programs that you have to consider, aeration, top dressing, overseeding, all that kind of stuff.
And I think Cam, Cam's here as our athletic trainer. I think he'll add to about the shoulder seasons and how much we would be limiting our teams if we did not have a turf or practice in March.
It would be significant at this point. Particularly, we've seen quite a lot of rainfall and as it is, we shut down the grass fields when we get that significant rainfall. If we did not have the synthetic turf, we would not have a playable surface. So, I think that's... I believe over the last year, we've probably shut down the grass fields between six and eight times, which translates to quite a bit when you look at all of the teams that play on it and the time lost, the practices we lose and then games as well. To play in the rain on a synthetic turf is much easier than it is on a natural grass, so.
Can you, can you make an instance where they've gone from a synthetic turf to a grass turf for ROI reasons? Once they already had it?
Have I experienced that?
Yeah, okay, thanks.
No. I've, I've experienced a few instances where they've gone from synthetic to natural grass for other reasons. Like right now, we're helping out University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. They're converting their stadium back to synthetic, back to natural grass. And that's just a desired thing with their...
Logic.
Their new coach. So, I mean, we've done all the work down at Gillette and with the revs.
Well, it's injury.
What is?
There's injury concerns, right? I mean...
There's injury concerns, but there's conflicting reports on that as well. You know, there's injury concerns on synthetic turf, but what sometimes that doesn't take into account is the amount of use on synthetic turf is significantly larger. So, when they're comparing like to like, it's not really obvious that.
Injury rates-wise, and I'm sorry to jump in on this, this is my work ethic. Injury rate-wise, when you look at occurrence per, they'll typically break it down by 1,000 instances. So, usually an instance is like an hour of athletic activity. The instance on natural grass surfaces is typically higher for certain types of injuries, ankle rolls, knee injuries, things of that nature. When you look at synthetic turf in comparison, the overall injury rates are typically lower as long as the field is properly maintained.
And usually they're impact injuries because it's a higher speed of play on synthetic turf typically than it is on natural grass.
The injuries that you see on average are going to be a little bit different on natural grass than you will on synthetic turf.
And that's a well-maintained natural grass field, keep in mind, too. Like if you're putting the amount of use that you're currently putting on your synthetic turf field and that's natural out there, your injury rates are going to go up.
And the maintenance on that will be significantly higher, the grounds crews have to work significantly harder.
You'll pound at the dust. So... So, lights, in 2002, I believe, is when your lights went in their Musco sports lighting system, sports cluster tube. So, over here is what you're looking at for your existing light system. The proposal is to retrofit the fixtures or the luminaires up at the top of the pole. Poles, foundations stay. So, just the top comes off and then an LED lighting system fixture will go in on top. The cabinets that you see mounted about 10 feet up, those will get replaced. There'll be a, what they call ball-tracking light, that'll get installed right above that, that actually points skyward. Because of the light control of these, if a ball travels above the fixture, you'll lose it in darkness. So, you have to install that ball-tracking light underneath. I think the things that we wanted to mention about this potential part of the project is it also will come with what's called Musco Control Link. So, with Musco Control Link, you'll have a whole different world of abilities to monitor and control this lighting system. So, if you wanted to rent out the surface for a period of time, you can track the amount of kilowatt-hours spent for that particular rental. You can also turn on and turn off the lights remotely. You can dim the lights. So, if you're just using the facility for community walking, it doesn't need to be lit up like you're playing a football game or a lacrosse game. The new lighting system will be brighter with less fixtures because of the enhanced capabilities of the lighting system. So, it'll be better for sports with balls that travel at high rate of speed like lacrosse. And I know you have a very, very competitive lacrosse program. Here's another image that shows, this is not Musco. This is what we're talking about right here. So, very good in terms of glare and light control. And down here is, if you scroll down a little bit, please, Dawn. This is the fixture, what it looks like. And these, over here, are the type of fixtures that you have now. You don't have any kind of fixture that has any kind of shield or glare control on it.
But you can put glare control on it, like in a desert-like game?
You can. You can. I mean, you'll have to replace the fixtures. That'll add weight. I don't know if the pole classification would be able to handle that. Plus, you're getting... What?
What do we have now, incandescent lights?
You have HID, High Density Incandescent Lights. I think the other big thing is, you know, with LED, you're seeing a tremendous amount of savings in terms of energy consumption.
What about capital costs?
Capital costs, so it's about $145,000 for the equipment. And then it's another, I believe, $50,000 for the install.
I'm just talking about comparisons to incandescent. My impression is that LED is more expensive to install, might have lower power consumption, but there are other factors like the effect on human hormone production, that type of thing?
Oh, it's the same warmness of light. It's, but it's not like we're going from, you know, to a fluorescent bulb or anything like that. It's, it's the industry standard now. You know, if we were to change out the fixtures there, it would be, I could go back to Musco and ask them about it. But without a doubt, if you're going from this to one of these, we're going to have to have less fixtures up there because of the weight, unless you want to replace the poles too. And you're not going to have the same amount of light control as you will get with an LED that consumes less energy.
So, is there some rule of thumb of capital cost of LED versus incandescent? Operating cost of LED versus incandescent? I mean, the world is going to LED because the world thinks, you know, global warming is real and blah, blah, blah. My point is that it's probably 10 times as expensive, isn't it? What's the...
In terms of the equipment?
Yeah, I'm trying to pick like, what is the logic for going to LED other than just the world is going to LED? Is it actually less expensive over...
Over time, yeah, for sure.
Economics has something to play a role as well. It's not that just everybody wants to move to LED because they think it's a nice thing, right?
It's a nice thing.
I'm saying economics plays a role.
I think it is a nice thing, but it also is, you'll see a savings over time.
I don't care about money.
Yeah, you'll definitely see a savings over time.
Rockland, what is the percentage of savings you'd expect?
They say you can see up to 80%, but, you know, I think they would have to do a... And I could ask Musco to do an analysis of, you know, the amount of kilowatt-hours that you actually spend and what your rate... of, you know, the amount of kilowatt hours that you actually spend and what your rate is. They could give you a projection of savings and, and what your actual term for buyback would be with those savings. These are a couple of images of LED systems. You can see the cutoff capabilities of these. Consistent light levels throughout the surface of the playing field. This is Dexter Southfield over in Brookline. This is the Town of Dedham's field, Gonzalez Field. This is actually Route One here. So you can see how bright this is right next to that. No light spill right off the surface of the field. This is Wellesley College, their track and field that we did. And this is the proposed rendering. So Don mentioned, you know, obviously the synthetic turf and, and the track are the, the big items, right? And then the light, it's, lights are the third biggest item. There are a couple of other additions to the project, and that's replacement of the chain link fence and gates around the project site, around the perimeter of the track. Right now, they're all galvanized chain link fence. They are tired, they're dented, the rails are all bent and warped. The gates are all sagging. Portions of the foundations are heaving. We have to pull out that asphalt anyway. So we, we can't really pull out that asphalt and, and save all the posts, so we're replacing them with powder coated black chain link fence and gates to match everything else. And then we're adding one small section of netting, twenty foot high netting here and twenty foot high netting here to provide additional ball control and protection from low angle shots on lacrosse while people are using long triple jump pits.
Is there some reason why we wouldn't make the track blue?
More money. Interestingly enough, yeah, it's about.
There was one consideration that we put it in as an alternate bid, but it does increase the price.
So it's about twenty thousand dollars more to go to blue from red. And really it's just because red is.
Yeah, a two million dollar product.
Yeah. So, I mean, happy to do it. I think it looks very, very sharp.
Does it perform the same way?
It does, yes. You know, so that's something that we could easily look at as an alternate. I think one of the other things that we talked about with an alternate was potentially doing the exchange zones. So your relay exchange zones in a different color. So it gives it another level of pop and uniqueness. But again, just like the blue is twenty thousand dollars, doing that additional color is another twenty thousand dollars. So that, that would be probably best suited to be an alternate. This is current breakdown of, of the proposed cost on the project. So mobilization for the contractor at ten grand, site prep and earthwork, just over a hundred and fifty, four hundred meter track. So that's a base preparation and the track surfacing at just over a half a million. Same with the synthetic turf field. And then about sixty-five thousand for the fencing and ball netting additions. Subtotal of roughly one point two and a half. But then you have to add in the below line numbers of general conditions, contractor overhead and profit. This is where we're showing those numbers for the retrofit of a lighting system for a construction subtotal of roughly one point seven. Right now, we're carrying about a fifteen percent contingency. I feel comfortable tonight stating that that contingency should probably be around ten percent. So you could take off another five percent on that because we've actually advanced the drawings quite far. We're going to be meeting with the town of Dover next week to go over a couple of things. And then from there, it's really just finalizing the documents and getting them up to bid. But with the fifteen percent work, we're just a hair under two million dollars at one point nine four three. Yes, yes.
Hey, thanks for the presentation. And it sounds like from conversations that I've had with other folks that this is on track to go out to bid soon. Just mention that because I think for folks in Sherburne, it would be important to have a bidding hand, a hard, hard, hard number before we, you know, get to, get, get to yes.
Please, fair.
That's comment and question. So some years ago in Sherburne, there was discussion about doing a synthetic turf field at Laurel Fields.
Okay.
And ended up not happening. A lot of controversy, partly about cost, also environmental considerations and concerns about the material being used and potential for either leaching into groundwater or affecting people who, you know, athletes who are playing on the fields frequently. So this is light for light replacement. Could you just say a little bit about kind of the state of play of how people are thinking about any of those environmental considerations with the proposed?
Yeah, it's a great question. And we run into it basically every municipality that is talking about installing a field. And let me preface this by saying I am not a synthetic turf salesman. All right? I'm a, I'm a landscape architect. I wish every field could be natural grass, but that just isn't the case. Okay? These fields serve their purpose and I think they're necessary in a lot of communities. From a health, human safety and environmental standpoint, there are concerns that have been presented. I think the biggest ones that come across my plate are, some are older ones like concerns about the chrome rubber infill, heavy metals, cancer risks or, or potential leaching of heavy metals into groundwater. Cancer risks have been completely disproved through peer reviewed scientific studies. So basically, in the, the chrome rubber particles, are there carcinogenic elements? Yes. Can they, are they bioavailable? No. So you could eat them. And, and you wouldn't have any risk. They need an acidic application to actually pull the elements out, the heavy metals out. And we had a risk assessor take a look at that. And they basically said that if you took a field and you were able to melt all that chrome rubber down and pull out all the nasty stuff and put it in a syringe and you injected yourself with that syringe every day for forty years, your risk of having any negative health effects from it would be de minimis.
What was the like, the materials? Are they P F A, P F S?
P F S is another one. P F S is another one. Oh, so I, I want to finish on, on the chrome rubber first. So the heavy metal one and leaching into groundwater. We did a field for the Fenn School in Concord that got, went through Conservation Commission because it was in riverfront area. Got approved, it got appealed by Butters. Went all the way up the ladder to the D E P. We had to go to an adjudicatory hearing. And everything got approved with the condition that we did groundwater monitoring. So over a period of years, we monitored the water coming out of that field to make sure that there was not an increase or a spike in heavy metal concentrate in that water. The D E P has since said that that monitoring can stop.
Bless you.
Because there was no leach, leach aid coming out of that field. So that's the chrome rubber question.
Yeah, so, I mean, I got the internet open. I Google, I Google heavy metals and turf fields. It says lead, cadmium, zinc, copper, chromium and mercury. Leach out of turf during.
Is that a peer reviewed scientific study? I can pull up a website that says the sky is black.
Well, you, I didn't mention heavy metals, you did, right? So what, what are we talking about? Are there heavy metals in the, in the turf field?
No, it's in the chrome rubber, but it's all encapsulated.
Well, that's in the field.
In the chrome rubber, the, yeah. But it's all encapsulated. It's not bioavailable through ingestion, dermal contact or inhalation.
But they, you can't leach into the, we all live in wells. If they can't leach into the groundwater.
It doesn't. I've installed these fields over groundwater protection districts and they've all been approved. It's a, by the EPA, EPA is what that is. And, and they have no environmental or health or human safety concerns with it. P F S, so P F S was orig, it's, everybody knows about P F S. It's been in the news a lot, forever chemicals. There's thousands of them. There's, I think, six that are regulated here in Massachusetts and in the United States. P F S was originally used in manufacturing of synthetic turf fields in the creation of the fibers. It was a chemical. P F S was in one of the chemicals used as a lubricant for the extrusion of the fibers. In the past five years, all manufacturing companies have eliminated use of that lubricant. So now there are no intentionally added P F S to any component in the turf manufacturing process. So we can get letters from, from the manufacturer stating that. And then if we need to go above and beyond, there are other steps to prove that there are no intentionally added P F S in the system.
Now, intentionally added is one thing. Do they guarantee that there aren't any P F S in, in the system?
So from a science base, there's no way to guarantee anything, right? There's none in the manufacturing of their process, in their manufacturing processes, excuse me. If we want to test that, they have tested it, it's come back and there are no P F S to the detection limit of the laboratory. That is on a standard carpet, all right? And there's a number of different ways that we could test. We could test for specific P F S. We could do a total organic flooring test. You know, if you have total organic floorings, there's a potential that you have P F S. Just because you have total organic flooring, so it doesn't mean necessarily that you have P F S.
No, because the big issue is that with, both towns depend on, on groundwater, the, the water supply. And it's a big concern that it should leak into.
So we're going through this in Lexington right now. And we're, we're getting fields approved there with a certain testing protocol that we're, we're going through with that. So I think the steps are, you know, will everyone accept a letter from the manufacturer saying that there's no intentionally added P F S? If that's good, great. If that's not good enough, then we do the total organic flooring test. If that's good, great. If not, then the next step would be right after manufacturing, we would have an independent test in the laboratory, go down to Dalton, Georgia or Chattanooga, Tennessee, wherever the carpet is being manufactured and test the carpet on site. That adds costs, it adds time. But it could give you a peace of mind. And the reason why we have to test it there is because the minute it gets put on a truck and it rains, then it has some level of P F S on it.
Don, do we currently test our water within schools anyway?
We have Medfield State Water, I mean, Medfield State. We have Medfield, Town of Medfield Water here.
Okay.
And then I think the, the last concern is heat. And, and just so you know, you know, if there's, if there's concerns about the chrome rubber, we don't have to reuse it. There are alternative infills that are available. Again, they add cost. And the cost is not insignificant. But we've been working with an organic infill right now. We've done it at a number of locations. The Park School in Brookline recently installed it. It's made of wood. So your infill would be wood and sand. But just like everything else, there's, there's advantages and disadvantages. So the, the wood holds on to moisture. So during the summer, when the field gets hot, it can cool the surface of the field by up to twenty-five degrees through evapotranspiration. However, because it holds moisture during your shoulder seasons, the surface of the field gets firm. So, because it freezes. So that's why it requires a pad underneath. And it's kind of a whole separate discussion, but it's a very interesting and innovative product that's manufactured from La Bla and Pines, which are sustainably harvested in, in Georgia. And, you know, happy to include that as an alternate too, I guess.
What's the order of magnitude difference in cost?
For something on this, for the size of this field, we're probably in the forty-five to sixty thousand dollar range.
I think this slide is actually helpful because we have crafted the whole bidding process in an attempt to meet sort of the, any town votes that we would need. And obviously you can't have a bid and say, we'll tell you next year. We sort of worked the calendar backwards, but you can see that we're looking at a bid opening date of March twenty seventh. So that will obviously go out on the streets before that, but that's when we would be opening the bids and seeing what the, the true cost potentially could be.
And then we're requiring those contractors to hold their bids for two months. Typically it's thirty days. We're requiring them to hold them for sixty days so that we can go through the town.
Ask another question? I'm asking for a colleague online who's texting me, texting me with questions. So the fencing would go around the entire facility around the track, it'd be on the outer perimeter of everything, yeah, okay. And on maintenance, what's typical maintenance protocol for what's been done? I mean, this, this may be not a question for you, but what's sort of been done? The intensity level of maintenance over the last five, ten years and what's typically recommended?
So I don't know exactly what's been done.
Yeah, that's not, that's not.
Yeah. But I can tell that, you know, there's, there's been intention paid to this field because of the lifespan that we have achieved on it. There's two really kind of critical things in my opinion that need to be done. One is grooming the field, usually once every three to four weeks, and that's really to stand the fibers up. Because once the fibers start laying over, they create more surface area for friction with the feet and undo wear. And then two is just cleaning the surface, so leaf debris. You know, you don't have a lot of that out here. But leaf debris, you know, you say no sunflower seeds, but kids are always having sunflower seeds. You know, other things like that, bobby pins. So, you know, usually the equipment has a magnet on it. So when you're, when you're grooming the field, the magnet will sweep behind and you wouldn't believe the stuff that'll come out of the surface of the field. There are other things that can be done too, that actually lift up the infill, kind of clean it and then place it back down. But those are typically done more on a contract basis. Snow removal is not something that we typically recommend. Obviously, you know, it has to be done, you know, if we have a winter like we had in two thousand, what was it, fifteen? But, you know, if you can let Mother Nature take its course, that's what we recommend. Because all too often, people are digging down too far, you're picking up the, the infill and you're, you're just increasing the chances of damage on the surface.
Can anybody say what the, like the last five, ten years, how the maintenance routine has sort of matched what are just?
So our grounds crew does some basic maintenance. And then I know since I've been here, we periodically had outside contractors come in. We actually just had someone come in this past summer, actually the first day of school, I think, to do the cleaning and the maintenance to make sure that we were okay for this year, so.
Find some good stuff in the field.
Did the repair, was the repair done by the outside contractor?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the repair was done at the same time that the cleaning was.
Yeah. We've had repairs though in the past, but we, we don't do the repairs ourselves. We, we've patched some of the track ourselves. But we haven't, internally with our grounds, I had to do it, but the, we have had, actually Rad is usually the company that we use that comes in and is our outside contracting.
Do they plow the snow when it snows?
No, we don't plow.
Does that impact?
One time I think we hired someone to plow because it, the depth was too deep, but we try to do the natural.
Does that impact the warranty if you plow?
Uh, no. Depends, depends on the equipment that you're using. You know, if you went out with a straight pickup truck with a, you know, typical.
Yeah, it's, it's a specialty plow that we.
That would, that would impact your warranty. So that's, it's just a touchy thing. So that's why, you know, if you can, let Mother Nature take its course. And actually, the, the best thing to do is have kids run on it and create those angles where the sun passes around in the footprints. And then once it hits the, the turf fibers and chrome rubber, it tends to melt pretty quickly.
Can you go back to the cost slide? I guess my only question is, what, what, what would be changed? Or what, what would you be looking at if we were opting for natural grass like versus what we see here? And I guess that's, that's my, like, just from a, just to honestly know, like, what is the difference?
So the number would be in here. So five hundred and twenty-six thousand, you know, to go to natural grass, we're going to have to run irrigation out there. You know, to go to natural grass, we're gonna have to run irrigation out there. We would have to pull up the stone base. A certain portion of it, we might be able to keep some of it. If you wanted to keep all the drainage in there, you know, it would make sense to go in with a sand-based field as opposed to a native topsoil field. Because native topsoil has no vertical infiltration capabilities. It has to all drain to the sides. And sand base, you know, you're probably looking at 400,000? Because the root zone mix is extremely expensive. It's like 90 to 95% sand.
And I would say talking to our grounds crew too, we would have to hire another full-time person to maintain it.
You got lime painting too, I suppose.
You would mow it?
That's pretty expensive.
Fertilization programs.
We would also lose the preferred space for our field hockey team. While Chris and the grounds crew do a fantastic job with the natural grass, their preference is synthetic turf.
What did we do before the turf field? Was it grass and did we have an irrigation system?
So that would have been before 2012. I don't really have a whole lot of historical knowledge about the field at that point. I bet I don't think it was actually a different kind of maintained field too. I don't think it's of the quality that we're used to.
It might have been a natural topsoil field. I mean, if you wanted to go back to that, you'd have to put drainage structures around the edges. So then the width of your field is actually going to be impacted as well. So right now you have a pretty narrow soccer field at 200 feet wide. 225 feet is actually the preferred soccer dimension for width. And if you were to go to native topsoil, we'd have to increase the crown. So it'd be up around one and a half to 2% cross slope. And then pick it up in a swale before you hit the edges of the track. And that swell would reduce the width of your field even further.
Kim, do you know of any TBO district or teams that have grass field?
Purely grass, I think. Yeah, Millis. Everyone else. Everyone else plays on synthetic turf. And Millis's field is in rough shape.
You anticipate the materials will last 10 years for the field? I know you said the shock layer lasts 16. But if the.
It's warranted for 16, so it could last longer.
But if the top is, needs to be replaced in 10, how, then that doesn't sync up? Then you take off the top and put it back down or?
Yeah, yeah. So it stays in place.
So it takes a mid-cycle replace, maintenance?
You mean the pad? No, like, so you could get through two carpets. And then on the third carpet, you'd want to consider replacing the pad. It's warranted for 16 years. It doesn't mean that it's gonna last. So like the carpet itself is warranted for eight years. But you get, you get more than that.
Another question. Regarding the wood that you were saying about the Loblaw pine instead of the rubber, how long does that last? Last as relative to the rubber, chrome rubber?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, it's a relatively new product. It's warranted for the life of the carpet. And it's also, as opposed to other organic infill options, it doesn't break down. So like other organic infill, like coconut, cork, walnut, they break down over time. So you have to come back and top dress it every two years with additional infill. So there's a deferred maintenance cost for that. With the Brock fill, you don't have to do that.
We will make Mark's presentation available to all of you to have and know that tonight's session has also been taped. And DSC TV will break it up for us so that you have just this segment as well. And again, we're all here. We're continuing to meet. Our steering committee, I should have said before, is John Smith, the principal, Kim, our athletic director, Emily Sullivan, who is home ill tonight, our athletic director, and Chris Hendricks, our grounds keeper. We've been meeting with Mark and Ben. We have actually a meeting on Wednesday. So we're continuing to work on this. So send questions to us. We want to do everything to make this be successful at both towns for approval. It's critical to our operations here. I also think it is a huge asset to the community outside of athletics. So I think that we want to do everything we can to bring this to happen this summer. We've worked really hard. I will add that we'll be bringing forward to the school committee next, in their March meeting, that we'd like to approve use of E and D towards this project. If you look at our financials, we do have substantial savings in salary. We'd like to take that and apply it to this to help reduce the financial requests from the towns. So that would be a vote that we're prepared to take in March. And know that the regional school committee has also assumed the cost of the design, the bid, the construction as well. So that's a piece that we're not incorporating into this. That's the importance that we feel about this project. And I will, you know, reiterate that we have purposely pushed this off to fall on the year when the middle school debt was paid off. I don't see any ability to push this off because if you look at our five-year plan, we have a lot of HVAC equipment and refrigeration that needs to take place. There is not room to push this off. And this is one of those projects that we have the ability to go through town meeting approval this year and get it done this summer. There are so many of the other projects that we don't have that capability. So again, that's another reason why we've placed this where we have and we've worked so hard to make sure that you feel comfortable. I know there's a lot of questions around this, which is why we had Mark come tonight to present to all of you. He's the expert in the field. But I just hope you know how seriously the regional school committee and administration feel about trying to get this done. It is critical to, again, not only our athletic operations, but it's used so much. And we're excited about the lighting. I think that's where we've talked about potential to really try to build up a little fund for the next replacement. Because we'll be able to have probably more use because someone doesn't have to be here to turn the lights on. We do think about.
I have a question about your schedule. Did I understand that you're gonna go out for bids on the 26th of March?
No. So bid documents are available February 27.
So when are you gonna have hard bids?
Hard bids are available on the 27.
When you said opening bids, they mean opening the odds whilst they've had bids in them.
Well, so here's a question for you, Dan. We're meeting on the 22nd to vote on, the Sherburne Advisory Committee to vote on budgets, warrant issues, whatever. If you don't have this information, how can we vote on it?
I think what we would have to do, if there's support for doing this, would be a conditional vote, you know, conditional on the bid coming in at or less than, you know, than, you know.
But then we gotta guess, like, I don't.
Well, we have a set of estimates that have a contingency built in. I don't, I mean, I think that's probably the best we can do.
Your meeting's on the 22nd. What day of the week is that?
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday. Let me take a look. We might be able to expedite the, so right now we're giving them four weeks. Technically, we only need to give them two weeks due to the size of the project. We gave them four. But maybe we can reduce it to three weeks and.
One other possibility, I mean, you know, sooner that there's complete information, you know, that would be terrific. You know, provided it doesn't mess up the process. The other possibility is, you know, we're gonna have that public hearing on the 22nd and have a conversation. We can take a provisional vote, but we can also re-vote two weeks later. You know, we can meet two weeks later and re-vote if, you know, if there's some significant change in the information. And we've done that in the past. So, I mean, on this schedule, I think we can, you know, we can have the information we need to make a decision.
Because on Dover's side, what's your key date? Do you have a key date that would be, that would make a difference?
No, I think we're fine with this.
Okay. So we'll look, I still, I think we left it open for weeks to make sure that we like, we got the excitement, or not the excitement, but the interest.
We want to create as much competition. Competition drives the cost up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for dealing with me for an hour. I'm sorry it went that long. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My pleasure, yeah.
Can we like take a five-minute break? We started a five-hour break, so. Yeah, sure, we can do, because we're transitioning. Would you want to take a two-minute break or a ten-minute break? 7:30? Sure. I think that's a great idea, to take a stretch break, get some water, pretty ish. But I think we're in the middle of what, 5:30? Certainly, it's already a long night for some. So I'm Mark Healy, I'm chair of the regional school committee. And I recognize that we all have a shared goal here in terms of trying to kind of maintain excellence across the board for our towns and for the region. We have constraints as well. You know, and all of us are here because we're figuring out how to do that with the financial constraints. But I think it's helpful if we have introductions. So I'd like to just do a quick round of introductions around the table. And then I know that I have an opening statement. I think that Dan Sickel also does. But we'll share our opening statements and then move right on to the budgetary presentations. So, can we start?
Oh, hi, Kevin Baumann, Dover Warrant Committee, first term.
Hi, Sarah Cadina Kinney, also a warrant committee for Dover and second term, five years.
Kevin Crowdie, Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee, first term.
Dova Ashk, Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee, first term.
Micheline Boudreau, Dover Warrant Committee, first term.
Nina Green, Dover Warrant Committee, first term.
Kate Potter, Regional School Committee, third term.
And I'm Jocelyn, the business administrator.
Beth McCoy, Superintendent.
Mark Healy, Regional School Committee.
Woody Weiss, Dover Warrant Committee, Chair of the Committee.
Cap Hudson from the Dover Warrant Committee.
Duncan Cansley, Sherburne Advisory.
Angie Johnson, and I'm on the Regional School Committee.
Laura Hellenstein, Sherburne Advisory.
Dan Sickel, I'm Chair of Sherburne Advisory.
Paul Pulew, Sherburne Advisory, second term.
Marty Howard, Dover Warrant Committee.
Mike Winters, Sherburne Advisory, Vice Chair.
Stephen Bonders, Sherburne Advisory, first year.
Shelley Sever, I'm also in Sherburne Advisory, this is my second year.
Jennifer Corry, Dover Warrant Committee, second term, sixth year.
Simone Zedzie, Dover Warrant Committee, first term.
Thank you. And if any of the chairs here tonight have opening remarks, please feel free to share them. Okay, thanks, Mark. And thanks, everybody, for being here. This is always a really helpful meeting for us. So I wanted to call out Don with big thanks for her work, her really excellent work on the budget and for being a great partner to us and providing lots of, lots of really great, great information. And also another plug, really appreciate that version 1.0 budgets this year were closer to version 2.0 budgets. That really, really helped with our budget process. That was a terrific, a terrific thing. So I wanted to just provide a little context on Sherburne budget background. I think Sherburne's reputation is every year Sherburne comes and cries wolf. It's, oh my gosh, the budget's so tight, you know. It's so, so challenging for us. So I wanted to just provide a little bit of context on that. You know, with the higher inflation in recent years, we, like every town, saw bigger increases in every department, bigger increases in school budget, wages going up more, coal is being higher, given the inflation pressures that everybody has felt. And that's pushed us closer to our Prop 2.5 levy limit. And just to kind of illustrate that, I pulled a chart that our town administrator pulled together in a budget roll. Well, pass one to you. I don't think the Sherburne people need to see this. I did about 15 copies, they can spread around. So this is a chart of our excess levy capacity. So that is how far away are we from Prop 2.5, from Prop 2.5 limits? And what you'll see is, last couple of years, high inflation. It's been eating into our excess levy capacity because, of course, Prop 2.5 is not indexed for inflation in any meaningful way. So excess levy capacity declining. Plausible scenario in which, you know, in a year or two, predicting the future is hard. Could easily be that some things break, or we don't get there. But in a year or two, probably more likely two than one, we could easily be in a situation in Sherburne where we hit those Prop 2.5 limits. And then either we have very tight budget constraints or go to the, or select board decides to go to voters and ask for an operational override. And, you know, those are, for all the obvious reasons, both of those are challenging, challenging outcomes. And I think it's that kind of looking ahead into the crystal ball that makes us in Sherburne just feel the pressure, the pressure of budgets. And I think really is kind of a call for all of us to, you know, really work together, both to, you know, think about how do we maintain the excellent educational quality that we all value and is so important in all three of the schools in Dover Sherburne, while as best as possible maintaining some fiscal sustainability? And kind of a heads up that we might be navigating, if you've got a prior wolf now, maybe. But we might be navigating an even trickier budget situation down the road. So I think it's just worth flagging that and kind of keeping that in mind in terms of budget planning and not just this year's budget, but just thinking about what's the, what's the path we're on and what do the next couple of years look like? So thanks, just wanted to, just wanted to kind of get that out there to set a little bit of, kind of the where our folks in Sherburne coming from as we think about, as we think about budgets. Thank you so much. Technically, there's no additional comments right now from the Dover Warrant Committee, but I have a few from the regional school committee. Thanks to everyone for coming tonight. I know it's tricky to think about problem solving when we are considering budgets and trying to plan appropriately for the future. And this still is a crucial process. And as the budget serves as a financial roadmap for ensuring our students receive high-quality education that they deserve, as we begin on behalf of the regional school committee, I wanted to just express and share gratitude to Superintendent McCoy and Business Administrator Ms. Vettori for their clear and open collaboration throughout the budgeting process. We've already seen some of their value sharing and planning tonight around the athletic fields. I've been able to experience that full force with any decision made at the regional school committee level over the past few years. Their dedication to balancing the needs of our students with the responsible use of taxpayer funds is unparalleled. As you know, the school committee plays a vital role in this process, not only approving the budget, but also overseeing its implementation and ensuring it aligns with the district's goals, priorities, and policies. This includes considering the budgetary implications of everything, from educational programming and staffing to collective bargaining agreements. This budget reflects our commitment to excellence in innovation and learning, challenging and supporting all students, professional learning and growth, family and community engagement, and safe and sustainable spaces. We understand the importance of transparency in this process, which includes the roles of the school committee, administration, and town finance committees. We also would like to express gratitude to the taxpayers who have supported the vision and success of our district. To that end, I encourage you to reach out to me with questions or to share your feedback as we work together to finalize a budget that best serves the entire community. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Superintendent McCoy and Ms. Vettori. Mark, can I just look and watch that? Yes. Just on introductions, we have one member of Dover, of Sherburne Advisory, sorry, I'm switching towns here, Sherburne Advisor, Nora Linsmith, who's online. So just wanted to mention that as well. Thank you for the run. Yeah, so we have Colleen Burt online. It's so hard when we're looking at just the TV screen. But thank you, perfect. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, everyone. Again, I'm Beth McCoy, I'm a superintendent. I'm also the mother of two children who went through Pine Hill School, the middle school, and are now at the high school. So I get to wear two hats in this district. I get to see and experience the academic rigor and opportunities that our students have. And I am, just like Dawn, you know, as residents of the town, committed to balancing the needs of our students and being most fully responsible to my neighbors. I want to thank all of you for your time and dedication, your volunteers, and we appreciate all that you're giving on behalf of our students. And I too would like to recognize Dawn, who's an incredible partner. And for those of you who have spent time with her, know what a value she is to our districts. This process begins in October. It actually began, let me start over, three years ago when I became from Assistant Superintendent, Superintendent and went through the entry process, meeting with all stakeholder groups to say, what do we love about this district and where do we want to head? From that, we created the district strategy and our goals for the next five years. We continue to visit those goals and tweak them as necessary. And each year, each school sits down with their school advisory council made up of teachers and parents and community members to revise their school improvement plans. So all of the decisions that we make about kids and about budgets and about resources are based on our district strategy goals and our school improvement goals. And you'll hear more of that tonight. So in October, our principals meet with their building based teams. In this circumstance, the curriculum leaders at the middle school and the department chairs at the high school, they look at their improvement goals and their needs around staffing and resources. They develop a budget that they then bring to central office. They meet with myself, the Director of Student Services, to look at student needs, the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and our vision for education and what we might need in terms of curriculum. And Dawn, of course, with her fiscal hat on, and we look at the budgets holistically. We make decisions about priorities and perhaps what must needs to wait to the following year. And we develop version one point oh budget, which we bring forth in the late fall to our school committee. After that time, we keep in mind any additional information that comes in relative to retirement, where we might be able to have some cost savings by hiring newer teachers, as well as, as information comes in from the state or from healthcare fluctuations. And usually, version one is a higher number, version two is a lower number. And we continue to try to build a budget that meets our needs, but also, you know, is within the capabilities of our towns. So our goal, again, is to meet the needs of our kids in every way possible. You're welcome to look at our strategic plan and our school improvement plans. And at the top of, you know, our strategic plan is academic excellence. And that's what we want to continue to offer our students. So, thank you, and I'll turn it over to Dawn to talk about what the numbers look like.
Exactly, so just following through the budget development process, Mark talked about School Committee roles, Beth talked about sort of administration roles and responsibilities. Our next set of discussions is tonight. That's one of our normal operating protocols, is to meet with both of you. We have met individually with Dover to talk about Dover Public Schools. We met individually earlier tonight with Sherburne to talk about Sherburne Public Schools. So some of the slides I'll go over a little more quickly, because you've already heard them before. And then for the region, we culminate with our public hearing for any community input, which takes place on March four, which at that time, we will be, I will tell you, we do have a version three point oh coming. So I will highlight a few things that we already know about on March four. So our budget assumptions, again, this is where, you've heard this before, by regular school operations with level enrollment, we take into consideration both Dover and Sherburne's budget guidance. Beth talked about that we align with our district's strategy along with our school improvement plans. And for the first time this year, we actually include our school improvement plans in the budget book, so that you could see the types of things that we're talking about, because those are probably the things that have the most present impact on our budgets, because those are things that have been identified to do in a year. And then we continue to assess our students' needs, both from a general and a special education lens. I know this is tiny, but I tried to sort of summarize some of the budget drivers. Well, obviously, payroll and related benefits here at the region constitutes eighty-five percent of our operating budget. As you know, we have contractual agreements with all of our bargaining units. We're looking at a thirty percent COLA for all of our bargaining units for fiscal year twenty-six. Keep in mind that our educators are on the matrix, so that encompasses also step and lane increases, which on average add an additional one point six percent if you're looking at just our educator compensation. So if you're looking at just that group, it's more like a four point six percent compensation increase year over year. Fiscal year twenty-six is the last year for all of our association contracts, and we will begin negotiations for the next set of three-year contracts in this coming fall. We've already talked about, and if you've been looking at our monthly reports, we did reduce the point six FTE human resource position that we had added in fiscal year twenty-five. Actually, yeah, twenty-five and twenty-four, eliminated in twenty-five. We have found more efficient ways to handle that. Adding a body wasn't necessarily our...
Can you share a screen, Nora, just text me and see if you can see it?
No, we can't, sorry.
I can, send this to her.
Yeah, oh yeah, send this to her, just to look at it. And we've also, post-budget fiscal year twenty-five, reduced a one point oh sped educator based on student needs. So when I say that we're constantly assessing our student needs, there was a lower caseload in one of our schools, which allowed us to actually eliminate a one point oh sped educator. We didn't know that when we built the budget last year, but it's being reflected in our actuals of this year and then obviously incorporated into our fiscal year twenty-six budget. We did have some tweaks to some of our positions. A point three FTE wellness educator at the middle school and a point two FTE English language learner educator also at the middle school. Those are already reflected in fiscal year twenty-five. Those were needs that we needed to do this budget. As you saw, version two point oh that I hopefully shared with your committee, we are realizing about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in savings from retirements. Incorporated in version one point oh, though, were also changes from staffing. So we, when staff leaves, sometimes they're replaced at a little bit of a lower cost. And so there is savings that you'll see in our current financials that are reflected in the budget. We each carry our own healthcare premiums here at the region. Just so you know, we sort of operate as our own little town. Version one point oh carried a nine percent increase. We are approving our West Suburban Health Group rates tomorrow. I am actually now on the steering committee, had a meeting right before the five-thirty meeting for that, and we approved a recommendation to be hopefully approved tomorrow. The region's rate looks more like it's going to be about four and a half percent. So in version three point oh, you will see what that impact is versus the nine percent that we're carrying. I will say the four and a half percent's a blended rate. I'll go in and take our current membership or subscribers and run it through the plans. We offer multiple plans through our health group, and they all have different rate increases. So we'll have to see how that comes out. But I do anticipate seeing the savings in healthcare in version three point oh. And we do continue to fund our OPEB liability trust, I think, just like the towns. We created one several years ago, and we are on target to, on an annual basis, contribute two hundred and fifty thousand to the OPEB. Our Norfolk County Retirement Assessment just received, so that's going to be another version three point oh. Nice to see. We had a projected increase in version one point oh of sixty-eight thousand. That projected increase is going to come out, because we actually have a minimal decrease between fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six. So that's going to be another reduction that we're going to see in version three point oh. The other sort of hold we have right now is our transportation contract. It's currently out to bid. The bid opening is Wednesday at noon here, central office, if anyone wants to join us. I will bring forward that, the lowest bidder contract to all three school committees at their March meeting. And if there is any adjustment to be made based on the reserve that we put in, that will be another adjustment for version three point oh. We tend to go high on that, so we don't have to come back and ask for more. It may be that we're at that point. I really, again, transportation is one of those sectors of the industry that is having to pay exorbitant amounts, high rates for drivers. We still have high cost of diesel, so I'm not really sure where that contract's going to come in, but hopefully, we put enough of a reserve in there that will be covered. And then we continue to do trend budgeting for all of our other operating accounts. I know that we're very diligent about pulling out one-time expenses. So if we put something in in fiscal year twenty-five, that's a one-time thing, we remove it in fiscal year twenty-six. So those of you who've got our more detailed budget books will see reds where we pulled out, and that actually helped offset the few adds that we had to do. Our student enrollment is sort of remaining level. You're seeing slight decreases. However, think about schools, the way we run. It's not like your elementary is where you say you've got one classroom teacher for twenty-one students. It takes a larger decline in enrollment before you start seeing any kind of impact on our staffing. I just want to highlight that, because I know that's a concern. The other budget driver for you is not only what our operating budget is, but it's what your operating and capital assessments are. And we did see some minimal change from fiscal year twenty-five, both minor swings in increases for Sherburne. And the other piece that plays into it, and if you look at your version two point oh, assessment calculation is the minimum local contribution. Dover's year over year actually had a small decrease, where Sherburne had an increase. That dollar for dollar goes into your assessment. And so you see a little bit more of an impact from that, then Dover actually saw more of a positive impact from that. And if you want to see more about that, there's all kinds of spreadsheets that I can send you from, from the state on that. So our operating overall budget increase is one point three seven percent. Keep in mind, that is reflecting that we have, we aren't carrying the debt anymore. So the debt's out of there, so that's why we're seeing, you know, a little bit of a lower increase over time. I hypothesize that if debt was still there, at sort of the same rate of reduction over time, our budget increase would have been approximately three point seven two. So I think that's a, a number that is worth just sort of gauging to see the impact of the debt leaving in fiscal year twenty-five. We'd like to just sort of show per people budget expenditure. This per people, I will say, is fully loaded, because actually, we operate like a town, so it has every expense of our operations is in that number, which is why it seems higher than if you look at your two elementaries, because we don't include a lot of expenses in our school elementary budgets that we do at the region. I just want to highlight the importance of the towns in our process. The towns' assessments fund eighty-five percent of our operating budget. So we are highly relied, dependent on the taxpayers to fund our school. And just to highlight, Dover's assessment is a decrease of about forty thousand, and Sherburne's assessment increase is about two hundred and seventy-one thousand. That's a two point three four percent compared to, Sherburne last year was three point six one, and Dover was two point four two. It's really hard to see the rhyme and reason of our budget to the assessments. So you can't say, you know, it, there's so many factors that go into the assessment calculation. So there's sort of the big picture of our revenues. So you can see Dover's assessment, Sherburne's assessment. You got forty-five and forty, that's where we get the eighty-five. We do get some support from the state for our chapter seventy, and because we're a region, we get reimbursement for our transportation. That's your chapter seventy-one. And then we do charge a variety of fees for students' activities here. We have our bank interest, and then the bottom is excess and deficiency. Our protocol for that is any revenue surplus that we have in the current year is automatically applied to the following year's budget. So if you look at our revenue operating statement, which is why I shared with the chairs, and hopefully, they share with all the members, our current operating statement as of January thirty-first, you'll see about a two hundred thousand dollar surplus. There are some things that still may go negative, so that's why we picked a hundred and seventy-five thousand. But that is our, sort of our protocols for UCE and D is revenue surpluses from the current year. And that gets you down to the one point three seven percent. So looking at the expenses, we talked about salaries and benefits being eighty-five percent. Those are those two line items. And then they get pretty small after that. Other expenditures, obviously, transportation is a big cost here at the region. And then we have also the maintenance and grounds expenditures, which includes our utilities and all the work that we have to do to maintain this campus. The nice thing is the bottom line, debt service, zero. So, I mean, it was, you were sitting in the building that we, in May fifteenth, we'll make the final debt payment.
Dawn, you mentioned the transportation. You don't have the final bid or costs on that.
No, that bid opening is Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
Do you have any anticipated, that's seventeen percent. What was that based on?
It was based on my experience with previous one, first-year contracts. I think this will be my, I was on School Committee when, when it happened. I was here when the other one happened. We tend to see a large increase in year one, and then very minimal increases, a little bit larger increases in year two and three. And then we always have the option to do a two-year extension. Basically, the two-year extensions are like one percent increase. So there's an incentive for that. But they do front-load. In the past, they have front-loaded the first year of the contract, I think, to make up for that. Things that have happened in the marketplace since the last time we did the contract.
Is it one single vendor, or is it a competitive bid that you do?
Well, it's, it's being competitive with that. But in the last couple of decades, I think, I'm going to say we've only had one bidder. It's a little territorial here.
Oh.
But I will tell you, it's not a bad thing, you get excellent service.
So, you have contracts for four years, five years?
Three years. So the School Committees will approve a three-year contract. And then I always come back to you in that third year to see if you want to approve the two-year extension.
And what do the increases look like in years two and three typically?
Like, if I remember correctly, like six, like maybe five percent. They're, they put, they front-load that first year. And then it's basically less than one or one percent in years four and five. We do have fuel adjustment clause, I will say, in our contract, so that sort of protects the vendor for escalating or de-escalating, for us, helps us with de-escalating. I've been here where we've gotten credits for fuel, and the last couple of years, we've actually had to pay fuel surcharges. Again, that's because the base rate was five years ago, and a lot has happened with fuel, diesel fuel during that time. So there, that protection is in the contract for both of us. So just looking at our, you know, summary, I like to look at, so, direct pieces of our budget that go towards educating students here. Staffing, salaries, approximately sixteen point nine million. I've listed out for you the FTEs and the general categories that we have. And then the expenditures for those services is about a million dollars. So approximately eight, approximately sixty-two percent of our budget is direct service to students here. And then looking at the administrative and related support services, staffing is a little under three million. That is all the shared staff for running central office. IT, our building-based staff, including principals, assistant principals, sped coordinators, administrative assistants, and it's also picking up our facilities and grounds. And then our, on the expenditure side, you're picking up all the cost of maintaining the grounds, the transportation, and general non-instructural operating expenses, like our property insurance, you know, other things that we have to do just being an organization. And that's twenty percent of our total budget. And then looking, obviously, a big piece of our budget is employee benefit expenditures. Right now, it's eighteen percent. Luckily, you're going to see that there is some yellow where I'm highlighting there will be reduced in version three point oh. We've already talked about the active employees, employer share premiums in Norfolk County Retirement. So that will be reductions on both those line items that we'll know by tomorrow. And that the School Committee will know in March. Again, long-term debt is highlighting that its maturity date is May fifteenth. That's our final payment, and, you know, with no debt service costs in twenty-six, we're hoping that provides some capacity in the town's budgets for our upcoming capital projects, because as you know, we're heavy on capital projects for probably the next three, three years or so. I also like to highlight what's outside of the budget that we're talking about tonight, that is funded through federal and state entitlement grants. And that is, the largest one we have is a special education grant that actually funds several of our educational assistant positions. We are a MECO district, so we get approximately three hundred and forty thousand dollars to support being part of that program. And then we have various title-related grants that help with mentoring, tutoring, professional development, approximately seventy-five. So I think I just want to highlight that there are other sources of funds that we receive that help supplement what we do here.
Can we ask questions as you go along?
Yep, and actually, I'm done.
How many MECO students do we have?
Roughly fifty, K to twelve.
So how many?
Forty-two. We are, our max is forty, so we only have forty.
And this three forty...
It predominantly covers the transportation.
The transportation.
Uh-huh, and a MECO coordinator.
So essentially, we're paying for their education, but that's, covers the, that covers the...
Covers all the extra costs that would be involved.
And we're spending twenty-six thousand a student on average?
You can say that, but you can take those students out, and it's just, it's not going to make a difference in our total cost.
See, you have a teacher in a classroom of twenty students, whether you have nineteen or twenty, the teacher still costs the same.
So we provided, sort of like I said, the snapshot of where our financial results are as of January thirty-first, bringing you forward from the budget package to version two point oh. And the subsequent memo that was also distributed, I don't know if you have any specific questions. I feel like this is a very sound and responsible... I feel like this is a very sound and responsible budget. We've had, obviously, some good news come out today about healthcare premiums that will favorably impact our budget. And we are continuing to see a steady number of retirements, which is how we sort of keep our budget in balance by having some of our higher tenure staff retire. We don't hire fresh like year one. We really look at an M3, M4 when we hire, but there is substantial savings if you take a look at our matrix from there to like your, you know, M16, step 15, which is where a lot of our staff members are. And so I think that steady flow of retirements, actually, on an annual basis, does help offset the salary increases that makes this whole process work.
What, what's the total student population of the middle and high school?
I think it's currently 1,000, I'm going to say 80, 1,080, but I'm not 100 percent, sorry. 1,079 is our October 1st enrollment.
Thank you.
471 at the middle school and 608 at high 12.
I got my stuff in early. Anybody else with questions? Comments?
Just a quick question if I could. What is the educator head count?
So that was on this slide.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
So we have 99.6 FTEs for general education. We have, and that includes educational, oh, they haven't, sorry. Special, like we do have educational assistance. 43.2 for special education, 15.6 for our guidance services. Our librarians and nurses are 4.6. And then we obviously have extracurricular sports and other activities, which is Cam, who was here tonight, and Emily Sullivan, our athletic director. So that's your staffing. In the budget binder, there's also a recap of all this and how many staff members there are. Actually, it has FTE count for the whole budget.
I just, the reason why I ask is I'm, on the health insurance, it's, it's about 10 percent of the budget. So it's a fairly significant number. And I'm just trying to divide it out by the number of participants in that plan.
Well, we certainly, we do not have 100 percent participation in our health.
Right, so if there's?
There's other things on that number. You've got to look at the Medicare taxes in there. If you're looking at just the employee, the $3 million number.
Yeah.
That's what you're looking at. It's not just all healthcare premiums.
And what else will be in there?
It's the Medicare, it's the workers' comp insurance, it's life insurance. So our premiums are like 2 point. Just the premiums are, well, the premiums are at three, are at 3 million for just healthcare.
Yeah, so if I took 3 million and just divided by, let's say, 160 people, which is, it's about 18, $19,000. I don't know, is that, is that in the ballpark? Is that what health insurance costs for?
Yeah, I do price health insurance.
Market value.
It's cheap.
And is there any co, is there any?
Yeah, so we're?
Participation?
We're a cost share 70/30. So we pick up 70 percent, the employees pick up 30 percent.
Okay, so that represents the 70 percent.
Uh-huh. And we have a variety of plans that we offer through West Suburban where employees have a choice of a high deductible plan or a benchmark plan. So they get to choose what works best for them. And we also have multiple providers, carriers that we offer. So we do have a sort of a cafeteria plan of what healthcare our employees have opportunity to participate in.
Is, is the, is the district self-insured or is it?
No, we participate in West Suburban Health Group, along with the town of Dover.
And relative to that conversations that have been happening over text with superintendents today, our potential increase in healthcare benefits compared to other towns is minimal.
Is what?
Minimal.
Is there anybody else in West Suburban or is it just?
Oh, yeah. Wellesley, Needham, Dedham, Wayland, Shrewsbury.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nine, there's nine units. So there's nine municipalities that participate in West Suburban. There used to be 10. I will say Holliston did withdraw. It's a very, you know, there's a lot going on. You see in the news in healthcare right now. So pharmaceutical is, increases are killing health insurance plans. And so you've got to be smart to try to mitigate those. And I will say, West Suburban is, you know, trying to look at rebate programs and do everything to hold our costs down because we do, we're self-insured in that pool, but we have a lot of control over what we offer our employees and how we can go out and negotiate. So I think that it's an excellent choice for the region to be participating in the West Suburban Health Group. We share our risk with Wellesley and Needham and Dedham. So we're in a risk pool, a much larger pool of subscribers. I've learned a lot about insurance over the last year.
Can I ask this question about, because clearly the salaries and benefits are representing 85 percent of the, of the operating expenses every year.
So how, and you're, that, that kind of gets cracked open every three years to kind of
negotiate what that's going to be? Is that the way that works? Like that contract's just kind of set in place?
So we negotiate rate increases for three years at a time, yes.
Okay.
So it's not the same, like, you know, there's, you may say 3 percent in year one, 2 percent in year three, you know, or two. It's not the same, but there are the contractual increases are agreed upon in three-year increments.
Okay, so then?
But every year could be a different number. It's, you know, it's negotiated.
Right, right, right. But, but then, so then we have pretty good visibility into what those, those costs are going to be for three, for the, for three years out.
When you have a contract, yeah.
When you have a contract.
But now, so we're in the last year of the contract.
Right.
Fiscal year 27, when we start doing our budget.
Yeah.
We'll have to put a reserve in because we won't know what our contracts are going to be. So we'll have to put our best guess. And we spend time talking to the two towns. A member of the, of each select board joins our negotiations team. So they're giving us information. You know, we're giving information, we're looking at what's happening at districts around us. And we come up with a number that we feel comfortable to put in as a placeholder, and then we just have to see how it all plays out. Because typically, I will say, it's more, it's probably 50/50 whether or not our educator contract, which is obviously our largest contract, whether or not that's approved by the time our budgets are done in March. Sometimes it does extend past that. So then we have to worry about, once it's, our budget goes and gets approved, that hopefully the contract, we can make it work within what is approved. So it, it, it makes budgeting very difficult in those years when we're in the pre-negotiation phase.
Dawn, who's on the negotiating team?
It's members of school committee. Like I said, a member of each select board joins us. And then that's our side. And then on the other side is obviously the union has various educators from all three. So we negotiate all three districts together. So it's school committee members from Dover, Sherburne, the region.
Are they educators from our towns or are they people from outside?
Oh, no, they're educators from our town.
So there aren't, there aren't like union negotiators from?
No, there are. They, they, yeah, we, we do traditional bargaining here. So they're, they have an MTA rep who comes and our attorney comes. We spend a lot of time together. Actually, we don't spend a lot of time together. We spend a lot of time in each, in our own.
When someone retires, teaching administrator, whatever, do we automatically replace them or do we expect shrinkage if someone's left?
No, we will look at that. We don't automatically replace them. And we actually prefer that the elementary, like in Dover, we're going to be recommending a reduction of a section. And luckily, we've got some retirement, so we don't have to let anyone go, but one of those positions will not be refilled.
Okay.
Now, that's something that we definitely do. We, we're really, I think, strategic about an opportunity that may arise when anyone leaves or retires to say, is this what we need? Is this what we want to do? Is there a different way to go? We have those conversations whenever there's someone who has announced that they're leaving. I think, we think, we just spend a lot of time thinking. I, I hope you guys realize that. We're, we're not really nearly, I mean, you know, our executive team meets every Monday for three hours. And this is a lot of what we talk about. A lot of thought goes into this. You know, I'm looking at these numbers constantly. I think you get very transparent reporting from us. And we're just, you know, we're partners with both towns. We want to be a success. We want to spend the money as frugally as we can. And I, I think that we do a pretty good job of doing that and still, you know, have success with our students.
What exactly is negotiated every three years? Is it the increase number?
Their salary.
But is it the percentage increase of negotiated? And that's like, so it's like one number is essentially negotiated in the negotiation?
Well, no, there's other things that fall into that too.
Workplace conditions and?
Yeah, there's the other thing of longevity. So if you, it might be helpful, if you go on our website under human resources, all of our contracts are there and you can see all the components that go into it. The educators have many more components to theirs. You know, course reimbursement, their, their whole, and it's more than just financial. The whole, you know, evaluation system is dictated in the contract.
All of that is negotiated every three years?
Every three years.
And the salary is obviously a big number, but so are leave. And so there's been a lot of conversation about parental leave and how long people get parental leave, whether it's paid or not, and those can end up being big numbers too.
Without getting, sorry. Without getting into, you know, actual personnel issues, have we fired teachers for poor performance? Can we? Or is it, are they protected by the contract?
No, that's the evaluation tool that allows us to.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we, you know, at the end of any given year, teachers in their first three years, we can part ways for any reason and just say that this isn't working out and?
Does that after?
It does. And there's times where it happens during the school year because we're not really teaching.
But after tenure, what's the, what's the?
It's a little bit more of a complex process because they have more rights within the contract, but certainly we have, you know, in my eight years here, there have been veteran teachers that have been let go because of their performance.
But we use the evaluation tools, but the evaluation tool is what we use to do. So think about at work, if you have, put someone on a needs improvement plan. Those are the, sort of the tools that we have to be able to manage that. Yeah, you're not, you don't, you know, we're, we're very, we, we have such limited positions that we need everyone to be operating at their full potential. Otherwise, we don't have room to have people that don't. So, I mean, you know, I've, I've seen it happen every year since I've been here and even on the other side, on school committee side. But I think that is a joint goal of school committee too, to support that happening. And that's part of the negotiations when you talk about how, how that plays out.
Quick question for Mark. You mentioned in your opening comments the phrase "safe and sustainable spaces" and there's a paragraph on that in the, in the strategy. Can you expand on that? What does, what does "safe and sustainable spaces" mean?
Sure. I think some of the sustainability piece is just maintenance that's required every year, so you're not surprised when things degrade over five years' time. And we've seen even with the turf field maintenance, sustainable spaces. Safe spaces.
So it just basically means like, like a roof that isn't going to fall?
Yeah, yeah.
But it expanded beyond, like, we have taken on the, you know, the environment, those sustainability goals is part of our strategic plan as well. And safe is in the place that we, world that we live right now, we've got to make sure we've got the security.
Do we have a school resource officer?
We have two that are, one from Dover, one from Sherburne. Then they oversee the elementary.
But they live, but they live in the school?
No, they're part-time.
Do we have safety and security procedures? Like, is the school locked every day until?
And that's a cut, that's what we're saying by safe. We've invested a lot of money over the last 10 years. And in training, yeah.
Do we have an alert system if there's a event in school? Teachers can lock the doors?
I can't tell you how much time we spend on all of that.
No, it's good, no, I just, I was on the board of St. Sebastian's School. We spent a lot of time.
And on top of, you know, the, the spending, maybe the state has requirements for public schools for annual training anyway for student safety. So there's a lot of just understanding policies and practices that help. They don't cost a lot of extra money because we're here with the students anyway. So I think it helps provide a layer of safety and awareness. It's like every time you take a flight, the instructor tells you and reminds you to keep your seatbelt on. We just have that kind of regular recurring message sent to the staff and students through drills. And so I think that alone helps keep a safer space.
I'm not sure if this is the right forum or not, but just for my own personal information, what, what is the phone policy in the middle school and in the high school of students?
So the middle school recently adopted what are called yonder couches. And so students who have cell phones that they wish to bring to school, when they come in in the morning, they're put in a pouch and that pouch is locked by a special magnet. And they can keep it in their bag, but they can't open the pouch without that special magnet. So their phone is in their bag throughout the day, they can't access it to look things up online, if you go on social media, and then on their way out to the buses or to the cars, it's unlocked. And that's new this year and we've seen a decrease in disciplinary matters and distractions. Social media has become a big part of our world, unfortunately, and everything that happens outside trickles into inside and takes away from the teaching learning that we're going to do at the high school. Students can't have their phones on them. Within each classroom, there are cubbies where the students keep their phones during class unless a teacher specifically asks them to use them for an educational purpose. If they're going to play, you know, a review game or going to be doing, you know, research online, they can use their phones or their laptops. So it's kind of a teacher-by-teacher discussion. I know that at the state level, there's conversation about Massachusetts adopting a Belt of Belt law, K to 12, that would mean that cell phones need to be away from the start of school to the end of school, K to 12.
You said that you, it sounds like you already noticed some effects from that policy. Can you say anymore about that?
Yeah, so I think I'm, you know, fewer incidences of kids having their cell phones out, which can have a negative effect on anybody around them and people snapping photos, you know, the, the insecurity of who's going to, you know, be watching when. I would also say that, you know, there's the science and, and the understanding of mental health around social media has shown us that the longer you wait to get students' cell phones, the better. However, in a, in a district like this, where our students and families are well-resourced, there's a push to give a cellphone in second grade and in fourth grade and in sixth grade. But now that not everybody has a cellphone at school, in the middle school, because you can't access them and use them, we've actually seen a shift with our sixth graders, the first time being in the building with the yonder couches, that a lot of parents have said, I don't have to buy my kids a cellphone because not everybody has a cellphone. They can use their device, their pad, their iPad at home, they can use their laptop at home, but I didn't have to buy a cellphone. And the parents are just feeling better about that in terms of, you know, mental health situation as well as in control situation.
Just one more question on the budget. Back to the slide on those community commitments.
Oh, yeah, I see. Usually that's in my more formal presentation, that's why I didn't, but I can.
Do we have any estimates of what these sources of revenue will, are in any given year?
Um, yeah, and every year it varies, but we?
Sure.
Yeah, and we don't see everything because positive PTO, FOPA, boosters all sort of operate and do things out, you know, that we don't necessarily see. If there's something, boosters does contribute directly to us for some things. FOPA will purchase certain things for us. I think they're more supporting the, the staff and sort of extra things for the staff. Much, much foundation typically gives us anywhere from 50 to 75,000 dollars a year.
Should we think of revenue from these organizations as entirely additive in the sense that we have a budget, we cover everything, and then any extra goodies?
Yes, these are the nice, these are the super, super nice things to have.
Yes.
Yes.
The enrichment that you often heard of.
So they're not part of the budget?
No, no, but I think when I do this, when we do this public presentation, we want to actually acknowledge that they're here.
Sure.
And that they are providing, you know, that extra level of support to the schools.
My last non-budgetary question perhaps is, and maybe it is a budgetary issue. How do you deal? do you deal with artificial intelligence and what's going on in the classroom?
It's a great question. We have a new Director of Educational Technology this year, who has been incredible, you know, we're looking at it from the, the policy perspective with school committee, we're looking at it for protocols and guidelines for teachers in the classroom, and then we've created a user agreement for students, I mean, I could spend two hours talking about this, teachers are basically putting expectations in place about when students can use it, what they can use it for, and what they can't use it for, because certainly, we want to make sure that our students can think for themselves, write for themselves, communicate and all of those things. So we were doing a lot of professional development around that, a lot of conversations, you know, clearly, our English and history departments are more threatened than our science and math at this point in time, but it's certainly something we're talking about all of the time. And actually, our January 28th, the 30th joint school committee meeting is online through DSC TV, there's a whole presentation by our Director of Educational Technology.
So Beth, the, does the policies vary by teacher, director, we mean, that science, math, like, or is it just...
Yeah, it depends on the activity, too, right? So, you know, it, it, the teacher might...
Okay, two English teachers have different policies.
Well, if, they don't have policies, they have different practices.
Practices, right.
Yeah, they're trying to align, because they want our students to have the same skills, you know, graduating from one year to the next. I was at the Massachusetts superintendent conference a couple weeks ago, and we had presenters from MIT, we had the Attorney General there, and someone from BU talk about this, and luckily, MIT is already thought way down the road and are ahead of us, no surprise there, but what they, what they've done is developed a K to 12 curriculum, you know, we usually talk about reading literacy, or reading proficiency and writing proficiency, now that there's AI literacy and proficiency, so they have created kind of a curriculum for us, be able to adopt, to make sure that there's that consistency, and we're scaffolding from year to year, so that we're not teaching the same thing in second grade, the same thing in third grade, but that we're making sure that we're preparing students for college and beyond. Big topic.
Yeah, I don't know if there are any software solutions to scrub written documents to see if there's AI embedded in it somehow, and, you know, do you have enough budget for your software and IT to kind of combat the, the issue?
Yes, there are, there are products that do that, and then they're outsmarted, you know, two weeks later, you'll see increases in our technology just for that reason, you know, there's been increases in all of our technologies since the pandemic, because we've learned to use it more, but thoughtfully, because we don't want kids using it all day, every day.
We do, yeah, we do have a basic plagiarism software that we use, I don't know how sophisticated it's gotten with AI, but that's been longstanding here at the high school level.
Thank you. You know, are there any outside consulting fees in there, projects for this year that we're, where we're paying for, you know, curriculum reviews, or, you know, I don't know, are there any contracts for consultants, I guess?
Well, we have professional consultants, you know, for example, at the elementary level, we have a new math curriculum, so we have people helping us implement the new, the new math curriculum, we have consultants working with the middle school history department on their new investigating history curriculum, you know, we, in lieu of having an HR director at the cost of 100 something thousand dollars, we have a consultant that we call for HR issues that are sticky or that we need additional support. You know, we are doing a constructional leadership study with an outside consultant this year, similar to the special education audits that we've done in years past, we're looking at the, the level of support we have for teachers in terms of supervision and evaluation, professional development, to make sure that they have what they need to perform at high levels, and how our students perform at high levels.
Where do those show up, just other expenditures, or...
So there's some in professional development, if it's for staff members, and there's a set, there's a set budget in each of the schools, and they just use it, so it may be, they may use it for different things in different years. There is no line item that has that, the superintendent has a reserve for special projects that come up, that can be used. We're not talking about big bucks at all, I mean, it's very minimal, and we, a lot of times, use our grants to fund some of that professional development for curriculum-related topics.
Some of the safety training that we've done has come out of the contractual services line, to have experts come in and teach us what to do.
So I think it's a rotating, there's a set amount, and it rotates how we use it, given what demands are for the year. But that would be in, oh, my, I would say in other expenditures.
Okay.
We're not talking big bucks at all.
Right. Thanks.
Well, I hope there's a comfort level, that's why there's no questions, and that you couldn't have known.
Sure.
That, you know, that, and I do think it's important to look at sort of where our operating budget is, because I think if you go back and look historically, we, we always operate between like 1 and 2% of our budget, you know, it's hard to get down to zero, but I think what consists of about 1 to 2% is our surplus when we end the year, end June 30th, we can't know everything, we were building this budget still, but we're still learning stuff about this year, but I think that there are, we don't over-budget in any means, so that if we were doing that, I think you would see larger surpluses on an annual basis. And the revenue is an area that we sometimes can't estimate exactly, but any extra revenue we get helps offset your assessment for the following year, so that goes back dollar to dollar. If we had known we were going to have this extra revenue, your assessment would have been less, and so we're giving you that credit the following year, and that has, that process of doing that has really served us well, because you never want to use E and D for a normal operating expenditure, because you're only going to fall off the fiscal cliff the next year, which is why we have been using our E and D sort of surplus for capital over, you know, multiple years. And as I mentioned, you know, I think we will be looking, I'll take one more look at our numbers and come up with an estimate that I think school committee could potentially vote for use of E and D towards the term project, to sort of help the number that you both are taking back to your towns.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, very nice.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You need to journal.
Yeah. We need, we, we'll need you to journal, we'll need you to call, we'll need you to journal our meeting.
All right. I think you can't just leave yet, but, it's a matter of order we use. All right, so I have a motion to end the meeting of the regional school committee, right? Kevin Thorey?
Motion to move.
Second?
Hundred seconds.
Hundred seconds, thank you. All in favor? Regional school committee?
Dover, Warren, can I get a motion?
It's not moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great.